Hello. Before I call the meeting to order, doing a sound check? Can everyone hear? Okay. Thank you. Testing, testing. Much better? Oh, great. I call the meeting of the Select Board to order today, January 17th, at 7:07 PM. A motion to open the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Roll call. Mr. Gito. Mr. McChrisky.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cave.
Yes.
And Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
And I am here as well. I ask all to stand if you are able to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justiciable.
Deborah, can I have two minutes?
Yes. Let me read Governor Baker's.
Go ahead.
In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration from June 16th, 2021 granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to public boards and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31st, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meet. This meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed via www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted in the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broad stream or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are appropriate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. First, Mr. Carrara asked for time to make comments. Mr. Carrara.
There was a passing in town. I don't have all the information, but I do know it was longtime school committee member Alan Mills has lost his wife. So we just have a small moment of silence, and then when I can get some stuff at the next meeting, I'll put something better together. But I just wanted him to know that we're thinking of him.
Yes, a moment of silence. Mr. McChrisky has another one.
As well, my condolences to Alan Mills and the loss of his wife. We also had a great public servant that I had the honor of serving with for some years, well back before I became a member of this board. Back in 1992, I served as an auxiliary police officer in the town of Stoughton and thought at one time law enforcement would be my career, but it wasn't. But during that time, I had the honor to meet a great man. His name was Richard Carbone. Rich Carbone passed at age 78 at the Hellenic Nursing Home and Rehabilitation Center in Canton today with his wife and his children by his side. Rich was born, you know, in Boston and was married for 57 years to Peg Griffin Carbone. He was a longtime resident of Stoughton, graduating in the class of 1963. Rich worked at Roland's TV, for those of us old timers that remember Roland's TV, for several years, and he was always in the electronics field, working at Epsco in Westwood, and then ended his career in Edgtech in Wareham, Mass. Rich did 17 years as a patrolman and as the deputy chief of the auxiliary police. But again, when it was more importantly, is Rich was everybody's friend, everybody's captain, everybody's chief, deputy chief of the auxiliary police. And that man, he breathed the Stoughton Auxiliary Police with a lot of volunteer hours for the town. In his free time, he was a musician, playing drums and saxophone professionally and guitar for his personal enjoyment. He was a founding member of Duke and the Classics and Lewis and the Clock Expedition. Rich was also a ham radio enthusiast, where he would talk to all corners of the globe with that ham radio, and above all, devoted to his family and spending time with them. So in addition to Rich's wife Peg, he's survived by his daughter Andrea Pratt and her husband, Albert of Stoughton. And his services will be at Farley Funeral Home Thursday night from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, and the funeral mass will follow the next day on the 20th at the Immaculate Conception at 10:30. Families asking lieu of flowers and donations in Richie's name can be made to the Food Foundation, Food Pantry Foundation of Stoughton, PO Box 757, or the Alzheimer's Center at 309 Waverly Oaks Road, Waltham. This is a personal loss for me in my tenure with this town. I've met some great people, but don't go back any further than someone like Rich Carbone. And for those of the Stoughton residents that knew Rich, and there's a lot of auxiliary, you know, police members, some are now full-time police officers in Stoughton, and several state troopers as well, I know that right now Rich is in heaven with his good friend, Chris Camuso, and they're singing up there down in the valley. And if you ever heard these two sing, it's a good thing they made a living in something else. But they're having fun now, and, you know, I'm going to miss my friend Rich, but remember him fondly, and as a member of this board, thank him for his countless hours of volunteerism to the people of Stoughton. And I would like to, as well, with the loss of Mr. Mills, Scott, we both ask for a moment of silence in the memory of both of these folks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. That moment of silence is in recognition and warm heartfelt wishes to the family and friends. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Next is Select Board comments. Are there any Select Board comments? Mr. McChrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to give the board an update since being asked by the town manager to kind of jump in and get some movement on the train station project, with a lot of time been lost, you know, just waiting for being able to get to the point where infrastructure was addressed. I had great success reaching out to National Grid, got a commitment from National Grid representative that they would speak to the engineering department, where the, basically the electrical connection that doesn't exist right now has really been just at a stalemate. That contact actually made a phone call to the engineer and had a message for when he returned to work, which was today. And I had a phone call from Paul Jafun, who's in charge, as you all know, in charge of all of our buildings. Paul said he was contacted by the engineer, and they are putting this on the fast track to get us up where we get the power. Once the power is on, then we can address the heating system, which I've been told by, you know, probably the only guy at Stoughton resident, thank God, but he knows the system very well, and his quote to me was, "I can get that dinosaur running." So once we get that up, he has a very good feeling that with a short amount of resources, we can get the heating system up, control the heat. And then we can address plumbing, again, just to get it so that we have a facility that if somebody was being, you know, somebody can use it. There's a lot that's got to be done. I'm still in the process of being able, and Mr. Lori is sitting out there, so I'll say, I did email Mr. Lori as well with a couple others, and I got Mr. Lori's phone, and I will be calling you, David. I want to have a couple people that have shown interest so that we can collaborate and make this be a project that is going to represent all the people in town. So I'll keep everybody up to date, but I just wanted to give you that update because I was pleased as well that we've been able to make, really get things moving. I did mention of a town manager. I'll be setting up a meeting with the T as well, because there are issues when we could possibly piggyback with the support of the T for grants, because it still is an active rail, and there's a lot of uses for that. So just one more thing that we include. So I'll keep you up to date. I just didn't want to go without sharing. I'm happy with those, you know, accomplishments, given where we were before. It's a great start. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Any other Select Board comments? With there being none, Town Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I've included in each of the members' packets a financial analysis of our health care program in anticipation of our next meeting, where we'll be talking about rates and premiums. Just a head start and reading, I thought it'd be helpful to each of the members, as opposed to getting it a day or week or a couple of days beforehand. So that's all I have, is just to let you know it's in your package, and it's self-explanatory. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give us a call. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Next is Citizens comments, and I wanted to read a ver, before we begin with Citizens comments, I like to remind everyone or state some ground rules for the agenda item, which I, as the chair, would like to voice as a preference before we begin. Citizens comments is an opportunity for the board to hear from the public, but shouldn't be a dialogue or a debate. I therefore encourage the board members and the town manager to listen to the comments made and make note of those that you want to follow up on and/or that warrant further discussion. If it's an item that needs further discussion, I'll put it on the agenda for a future meeting. If it requires follow-up, we can direct the town manager to do so. If the comment doesn't require board discussion at a future meeting or follow-up by the town manager, I would suggest that we simply try to say, "Thank you," and continue to the next speaker, and then to the board's business. I'll try to give everyone all the time they need, but we have a full agenda, as we always do. So I'll ask the speaker limit their comments to one or two minutes, no more than three. Anyone addressing the board should refrain from making personal charges or making disparaging remarks or from verbal attacks upon the character or motives of members of the town boards, of town staff, the citizens of the community, and/or each other. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks during public comment in a respectful manner. Whenever possible, please try and refrain from mentioning the names of private individuals in your public comments. And with that said, we'll move on to Citizens comments. I see several. I see Mr. De Felice had his hands up first, and then Peter Ventresco had his hands up second. I might have missed some that were before. Please step forward, state your name and your address before, if I, someone raised their hands before Mr. De Felice. I'm sorry, I did not see your hand.
My name is Ed De Felice, 200th away.
Can you do a testing, please? Because I can't. Test, test. It's on, yeah.
Closer.
Okay.
Actually, Ed, turn the mic down a little bit so it's facing you better. There you go.
There we go.
Do you have any tall people after me? I mean.
Don't know. Thank you, Mr. De Felice.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say Happy New Year to all of you, because I know you've had meetings, but I haven't seen many of you.
Can you speak up?
Okay. I just wanted to say Happy New Year to the board members. I have run into Joe occasionally, but I don't think I've seen anyone else.
Yeah, keep your phones out of sight, folks. This guy's walked off with my phone twice.
Twice. It was a test.
And took it home, had to return it.
No. I'm never going to live that down, Joe.
Hold on to your phones tight.
Well, as far as comments, I wanted to update the Select Board about the ongoing saga at SMAC. Over two months have passed since I and others, as, excuse me, paying members of SMAC, attended the annual SMAC meeting to vote for a board of director. However, the three representatives for the town did not let the vote take place, and without a reason, they had a police officer exit us out the door. I can't remember the last time seeing anything like that here in the town hall or, you know, anywhere else at any meeting. But anyhow, that's what happened. So, excuse me, tomorrow night, there was a SMAC meeting at their studio. However, their, excuse me, however, their agenda doesn't address when the next, the meeting's going to be held for voting. This has been quite, as I mentioned earlier, quite some time. So I'm asking that, it might be sound harsh, but I think it's something like it should be addressed. I'm asking that the board, the Select Board, remove the two men that you recently appointed to the Board of Directors. On page nine of their rules and regulations, excuse me, it says in, excuse me, it says falling in, whoops, things alive. In a quote, what it says, it says, "Any appointed director may be removed at any time by his or her appointing authority." In this case, you all are the appointing authority. And I would further ask that the Select Board consider dissolving SMAC as it is now and request RFPs for forming a new group to represent the town and its relationships with our cable companies. I've had, you know, I've been thinking about this for some time. Like I said, this, two months ago was the meeting. Ballots are in a box up there somewhere. I wanted to bring that to your attention. I think something has to be done there. It's like so disrespectful that they ushered all the people that were there to vote basically out the door, and the poor lady, the poor police officer, the young lady, I felt sorry for her being put in that position, but it was no problem. You know, everybody just left. But I don't think anybody, any person in this town should be treated like that at a meeting without any cause. So that said, yes, and I would hope that maybe you guys could do something about that, because God knows when they're going to have another meeting, because they don't tell us anything.
Thank you, Mr. De Felice. At this time, the only response I have is, "Thank you very much." Did any of my fellow board members have any media? We do not have any.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Can you hear us? That's Dolores Staton, and she's taking our meeting minutes. Staton, I'm sorry, Dolores Staton.
Excuse me, Madam Chair Roberts.
Can you hear us? Sound check, one, two, three. Ms. Staton?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Staton, or are you, it does not look like you're on mute.
Okay.
Just a minute, let's, okay.
Mark Tisdale?
Just one second. Let's take a recess for about two minutes because our.
Dolores, can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's take a recess for about two minutes because our person that takes the minute is having a problem.
Called in the number, and I can't hear anything either.
Two-minute recess.
So I, I'm trying to get them out the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. And I call the meeting back to order. We were at Citizens comments, and we were with Peter Ventresco. Please step forward and state your address. And also, keep in mind the parameters that I'm trying to follow about comments.
Peter Ventresco, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'm here to address the issue with SMAC. We had an election back on November 9th of last year, and the ballots were never open. So that makes me think that they're running meetings up there that are illegal, maybe some of them members up there have been voted up. So how can you run a legal meeting? An election was taken, but it was never counted. That's number one. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the stuff Eddie De Felice said, but the other thing is, I'm taking a senior moment again.
Take your time, Mr. Ventresco.
Take my time. Oh, yeah, okay. You, a little while ago, you said if anybody has any grievance on Citizens comment, to address you people, and you'll bring it up at another time, and schedule us. Well, over two months ago, we were here with the same issue, and Mr. Carrara was the only one that said that at the end there, we should bring in both sides to hear both sides of the story and come to some kind of conclusion. Well, he made that a statement over two months. So why is it taking this board so long to follow up on that? I mean, this should have been already done, and the two sides of SMAC should have been here already to address this. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ventresco. Was there anyone, and Mr. Baynes, I almost called Peter Baynes.
I'm down if I sit.
Okay. Please keep in mind how we're.
I just, I'll make the statement that I, I think I conform to the chairperson's comments at the beginning of this about public comments.
Thank you.
I will keep it short.
All right.
I will enter into the record just, first of all, my name's Peter Baynes. I'm a precinct two town meeting member. I wanted to thank all the volunteers in this town for all the different boards, and particularly the elected officials, for all the time you guys give. All right. Thank you so much for that. Right. The crux of my, my letter that I put together tonight, I did have it stamped in, and if you didn't have a chance to review it, that's fine. I understand completely. I don't expect instant, instant solutions. In my career at UPS and management, I learned, we learned about, about management, about, everyone has an area they're responsible for. They're called silos, okay? The important decisions that are made should be discussed collectively, and I was so at ease today to see that they actually have on the agenda group meetings. It was like, wow. And I think it goes back to the thing, that's the way we always did it. But anyway, we're having group meetings. My comment for today would be just the fact that I was so happy to see that. I printed off the planning board agenda for tonight, not realizing it was part of the main agenda. I didn't realize that. So that's, I'm happy to read this real quickly to the town manager and the Select Board members from Peter Baynes, precinct two town meeting member, regarding the planning board meeting for 117, which I thought that was the only meeting. Anyway, I'll go slow. It's hard, though. This letter is to follow up on my many pages of documentation during the 2022 calendar year that all members of the Select Board, the Engineering Department, the Planning Board, and the Conservation Commission all have copies of. Since January 24th of '22, my attempt as a town meeting representative to have a public discussion about 400 Prospect Street Fire Station and the entire non-transparent process has not succeeded. When I located this planning board meeting today, I decided this letter might result in another joint meeting of respective boards to finally have some taxpayer and public input. This seems to be deserved by the townspeople that pay taxes and address the decisions and processes that happen in this long, ongoing process. The agenda for tonight's meeting is attached, and I believe that my constituents of Prospect Street area and all the Stoughton taxpayers deserve consideration of a public meeting. The facts of much of the behind-the-scenes, non-transparent issues and processes that occurred should be openly discussed. My request for such a meeting should at least be discussed at the next Select Board meeting. I look forward to confirmation or rejection of this request. And I put down my email, and I put down my phone number, and whatever they decide to do, the taxpayers are paying attention, and there are many people that have issues or have comments or have concerns about the way the project went through. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Baynes. Are there any other Citizens comments? Please step forward and state your name and address.
Testing, testing. Greg Pokraka, 318 Prospect Street, town meeting member. Thank you for allowing me to make comments today. The people of Prospect Street have been asking for a public hearing and discussion on the topic of 400 Prospect Street since it was announced that this would be the next site for the fire station. Everyone supports a new fire station. We need that in this town. But yet, this, this public hearing has yet to happen, so I'm hoping the board would consider this. It's well documented that much of the land at 400 Prospect Street was created through unauthorized backfilling of the wetlands, and an order was issued by the town of Stoughton in 1989 to cease and desist on this unauthorized activity at the site of 400 Prospect Street. Personally, instead of further developing this site, I believe the town of Stoughton should be restoring this land to its original state by replanting the clear-cut trees and solving any issues with vegetation and any other environmental issues. In addition, I request a public hearing and discussion regarding this site. I do commend Scott Carrar and Lou Gito for recognizing in previous board meetings that this site is problematic. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Are there any other Citizens comments? With there being none, we're moving right along to our item number five, Joint Meeting 300th Anniversary Committee. There will be a correction to this, seeing as that the 300th Committee did not post a meeting, so this will be a conversation of the Select Board with those members. And if the members that volunteered to be on the 300th Committee, can you step forward so we can recognize you, please? Thank you very much. There are three. So we want to give you some aid and support.
Pull some chairs up, Dave. Pull a couple chairs up, Dave.
Pull the chair.
That's what you need, there.
So, so thank you very much. I know they get kind of tied in there. If you could say your name so the community know who you are again, I know you did that when we actually voted you in to be on this committee, but we want to give you some support. We want to ask you if, not tonight, but at another time, if you can let us know what date you plan to meet. I will be there, and I'm sure one other board member will be there, and then you can form some structure, and that structure would be who's the chair, and we'll connect you with the Director of Recreation. But before we get ahead of ourselves, can you please state your name and your address? I know this is the members of the 300th Committee.
Hi, my name is Scotty Santos.
Put the, put the test degree button. It's on. Now, hit it again.
It's on. You hear me now?
Get in a little closer, Scott.
Yep. So my name is Scotty Santos. I'm from Sky Card. The address is at 428 Pearl Street in Stoughton.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street in Stoughton.
Well, hello there, Miss Walsh.
Dr. Patricia.
Dr. Patricia Van Dogt.
4 Queen Amway in Stoughton.
Well, hello there again.
David, I'm on labor. Looking on your question.
Well, hello there, everyone. So we want, we do have funding set aside for the 300th event, but we, but because you haven't formed, you haven't met and identified who's going to be the chair, vice chair, and things like that, we wanted to help you. We wanted to give you some, some direction to do that, so you can meet, and then we could come to your meeting. One or two of us can join your meeting, and we could like brainstorm on some ideas for the 300th. Like I said, we do have funding set aside. Like I said, we do have funding set aside for the 300th. So preliminarily, I'm just asking my fellow board members and town manager, Mr. Coulter and Mr. Tisdale, do you have any further suggestions for the committee? Do you think it needs to be larger? Because right now, we have, I thought it was five, but do you think it needs to be larger? What do you say? Yeah, Mr. Carrara.
I think an undertaking of what, what they're going to do, I think it should be a seven-person.
Seven people.
Group. They could take a couple more members to take the load off other people, because it's just, it's a, I think it's a big undertaking.
I think it's a big undertaking, too. Yes, seven sounds like a good number. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. McCrisky.
Well, a couple people that I do know, worked with in the past, and thank you. And to new folks, thank you as well. I was the chair of the 275th. I don't share some beliefs by people that it's a huge undertaking. It just is very important that the people that are there are vested in it and truly want to do it. We did that, and Ms. Walsh remembers well. We didn't have a big giant committee, but as time went on and events were there, people came to particular events that they liked, and they got involved with those. And that's where we need to bring in, when we have a social tea for senior citizens, a white glove event that we had for seniors. You know, there were people that volunteered for that event. There were extra people that volunteered for the parade, because it was twice as long. And we ended up changing the direction of the parade as well, because we needed a bigger staging area, being the high school, so we had a lot more there. So it really, it, what it needs to be, in my opinion, and I'd be more than glad to sit in that for us meeting, Madam Chair, as I mentioned to you, I'm still trying to dig my files out, because I do have a lot of the contacts. The Recreation Department, I had already given them a lot of the contacts as well. But it's more of logistics. It's planning out what the committee wants to do, what types of events that they want to do, and there's always new things that come up. We definitely, we, we are the, the, say, the image of our community is changing in multiple ways. There's a lot more activity than there was back in 275th Committee. So I think that we're going to have a pretty good opportunity. So I think what it's got to be is hand in hand with the Recreation Department, because we didn't have paid employees that were there to help us when we did it. We did all this. My good friend Dennis Walsh, a member of the, the planning board right now, is with us as well, and when he was employed by the town, was the backbone logistically, you know, in getting a lot of these, you know, events done. So we do need to interact with the DPW as well for those events. You know, police, fire, so forth, parades, you know, there's a, there's a lot of, you know, different mechanisms that come into it with the size of them. So my personal opinion is we don't need to have, I think, seven. If we could get seven, that's three more than we have here. That would be really as big as it needs to be, until we stop planning events. I see another face in there, and I won't call the person out, but somebody who definitely knows how to put events together, that might be willing to help out. But that's how we get people as we go along, you know, depending on the types of events we run. So it's definitely a good thing for us to get, at least on our website, a link to the 270, the 200, 300th, and to get people to be able to go to the website and give them their thoughts. Because one of the events that I ran, a good friend, a lot of folks know, Finance Committee member, Bob Desmond, and when we were in the Events Committee prior to the 275th, that I had taken over after it kind of slowed down on the parades and so forth, Bob had said, "Let's do a haunted hayride." I said, "Well, I've seen those, Bob. They're a heck of a lot of work," and they are. Again, Dennis Walsh is here that'll remember it, Cynthia Walsh will remember it, and it was probably the biggest event, the most tedious event that we had run. And I remember saying to Bob, I says, "I think it's too big for us to do." And I said, "But if you think we can do it, let's go and try." And he ate my, ate my words, because it was the most successful event we had, and continued on after the 275th, and always drew crowds. So, you know, sometimes, you know, on leadership in these events, you know, you just jump over the edge and build your wings on the way down, you know? And, and some of our greatest events were done just that way. So I think what we got to do is just start a dialogue, and I would say that, Madam Chairman, through you to the town manager, if we could have Trish get a, a spot up there for the 300th, with the ability for people to leave their name and number, so we can reach out to them. And even on the website is if we could do some kind of a banner that says, you know, "Our 300th anniversary is right around the corner. What are your ideas? What can you do to make it successful? Join the team," something like that. There's a lot of people here, you know, that are in the audience, and I don't know everybody, but if you're interested in helping out, this is the opportunity, once in a while, for us to showcase who our town is, you know? And some people just view our town as the cut-through for Route 27, 139, and 138. But we know here, in this room, that it's a lot more than that, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCrisky. One, are you part of the 300th as well? Please pull your chair up and introduce yourself, please, if you can do so. Yeah. Yeah. We want to... Yeah, there. There we go.
Hey, Joanne, Joanne, I wasn't going to call you out, because I wasn't sure, but I'm, I'm glad you, you know, I just was glad, I wasn't sure if you remember, but of the, of the... Oh, was it?
Oh. Oh, sorry.
Great. So we're all set. We only need two more now.
We only need two more now, and...
And she's like five people anyway, so we might be able to do it, yeah.
That's wonderful. Hey, here's a question for you, Mr. McCrisky. When you had, you and your team had your celebration, was it one day, or was it throughout the month, or throughout the year?
Throughout the year.
It was throughout the year.
Throughout the year, we had a black tie event over at Lombardo's.
Oh, my goodness. Keep that in mind.
That, anybody that was there, boy, I'll tell you, when you see some of the people that we know, and you see them in a gown and a tux, you whole, holy cow.
Oh, my.
You actually shine up pretty good. But it was a great event. That, that black tie event was a great, great event, and we can do that again.
Yeah, we could do that.
I want to see if I can just mention this as one big event a month.
Yeah, we...
200th, 300th.
Right.
I mean, I remember the 250th.
That's right.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of things, parades, things like this.
Yeah.
But I think we needed a small, like, teams or get-togethers or public lectures.
Yes, have something north, south, east, and west. But before you go on, Mr. Coulter, did you want to comment on something?
Yeah, just a brief comment, Madam Chair. I had the, the honor of being on the original Plymouth 400th, you know, America's hometown.
Yes.
And the way they organized, I thought, was pretty interesting. They, they set up the calendar so that there was a monthly event, a, a weekend event, and a day event. So there was something every month, an event. Then for the weekend of the actual anniversary, it was a round-the-clock celebration with different events. And for the day of the anniversary was the, you know, the, the parade and the, the hall hands on deck. And what they did is the original founding committee documented the vision for the 300th, or in that case, the 400th. And it's almost like a syllabus for a class. And they said, "This is what we're going to do every month. This is what we're going to do for the actual month of our anniversary. This is what we're going to do the week of our anniversary. This is what we're going to do the day of our anniversary." And then they worked backward from there, and they said, "Now we need to recruit people for each of these areas." I mean, the event at the time was inviting the Queen of England, inviting the mayor of Plymouth, England, inviting the President of the United States, and of course, it was all wiped out by COVID. It was horrible. I mean, it was, it was devastating. The town ended up spending hundreds of thousands of dollars in planning. It was all washed out. But perhaps I could get those documents if you'd like them. It was a planning criteria that went right, once they...
I want to respond to that.
Once they did it from a macro level, high-level proceed, then they recruited people that had expertise or experience in those particular areas that they wanted to celebrate. So they actually knew four years before the 400th, what event was going to happen on what day. And then the work was all just in, you know, convincing the Queen that she wanted to come to Plymouth, you know?
Oh, my gosh. That sounds so awesome.
And again, it all blew up, unfortunately, but their, their planning was, was very impressive, and I'd be happy to get those original planning documents if you'd like.
David, did you have something? Oh, Mr. McCrisky, and then David, then Ms. Walsh.
I have to respond to that, and I'm looking at Joanne as I say that. One of the original planning members of the Plymouth Parade and the 400th is Joanne Callahan's brother.
Woo-hoo.
Joe, Joe McStow was one of the founding members of that parade. The founding member? Okay. So I don't think we'll have a problem getting documents.
The Thanksgiving Day Parade.
The Thanksgiving Day Parade. My brother's a founder, and it was supposed to stay dedicated to my parents. There's certain little things that I know a lot about that parade.
That parade is second to the United States' Holy Masons.
Right.
Yeah. Well, then, obviously, we do a point.
So if we...
He felt that, that why, why do we celebrate in New York?
Right.
Plymouth is...
America's hometown.
And so that's what's at stake, and he, that was his goal.
Well, his legacy lives...
Joe, yeah. Joe is...
His legacy lives on.
And Joe McStow is the owner of the only validated document with all the appropriate paperwork for the actual cast of the Lincoln Memorial that was presented to Congress to be used as the model for what the Lincoln Memorial will become, and we had that in Stoughton because of Joe's goodwill, in our historical society, for a year on display. It was amazing. So, great. I know we have to get moving, Madam Chair. I apologize.
Yeah. David wanted to say something, and Ms. Walsh, and then...
And Mr. Gito wants to say something.
And then Mr. Gito, but be mindful, we have a public hearing scheduled for 7:55.
I will say this in less than three minutes. I would like to see, as I think I echoed when we first met, that every ethnicity that is represented in our town has a voice, has a place of telling their story, from the Ponca Pog Indians, our first residents, all the way to the families that just came here last week. Everybody's story is important, and as the town historian which you appointed me, I want to see that their story is told and represented. I did not see that back at the 250th. Of course, I was seven then. However, the other thing, our anniversary is going to be a tough one. It's December 22nd, 1726. I don't know many people around the December holidays are going to gather together three days before, say, Christmas, or Hanukkah, or whatnot. So that's why that 12-month period. In 1926, they did it in August. When did they do it in '76? Does anybody remember? Was it in July, June?
July.
July. So the summer month is going to have to be it. And, and basically, ultimately, I would love to see the whole town embrace it, not just seven people. And I'd love to get the feedback, so.
Excellent. Excellent. Mrs. Walsh.
How much money has been set aside?
Right now, $50,000.
Five zero?
Five zero with three zeros following that.
Very generous. And I have really no plans on spending. I don't think the committee does either. The idea is to have some seed money. Some events, someone mentioned a ball, would definitely have to charge for, but I think the goal has always been to have either no cost or low cost, so we can get as much participation and families as possible. I was given no notice about tonight. No phone call, no, well, of course, you can't email Cynthia Walsh. So I, one of the members was kind enough to, to ask me about it yesterday. But initially, when the first organizational meeting kind of fell apart, I planned on the next one being February 13th, which is a Monday at 7:00 PM. And I need help with setting, you know, setting it up and the agenda, and notifying the members. I still haven't got a list of the membership. I think each of us should get a list of who's on the committee, and their email addresses, and in my case, their phone numbers, so we can communicate with each other. After the organizational meeting, with the approval of the other members, I was planning on scheduling a public hearing to get the kind of input you're talking about. I've talked with Trish, and people could just email their ideas, or they could physically come to the building. While it's true that I've lived in Stoughton for 75 years, and it's true that I was on the 275th, I don't have a spouse. I don't have kids. We need to find out what everybody wants. Some of the events we had, we had the children's pet show was a big hit. That's not an idea that would have come from me. And so besides the members of the committee, we want to find out what all these different groups want. I have no idea what the Portuguese community wants from, from this event, or what the indigenous community wants, or what the Black community wants, or the Brazilian community, or the Haitian community, I mean, the Southeast Asian community. I mean, Stoughton, when you talk diverse, you aren't just Whistling Dixie, because that would be racially incorrect. But that's the kind of thing we're talking about. Now, if, if you folks want to schedule that kind of thing, it's fine with me, as long as you let me know when the meeting is and where, so I can get there. And I really appreciate you gathering these folks tonight, and I appreciate the fact that you seem to be thinking that this is as important as I do. 300 years doesn't happen. It happens every 300 years. It's really important, and folks want to participate. I've had people come forward, already designed their floats for the parade.
That's correct.
I should warn you, some Walsh goats and sheep are going to be on a trailer in that parade, representing our farm, which is part of Stoughton's background, the agricultural part of Stoughton. There's still a few of us left. Other people have come forward to say, "When you get ready to do this, I'll be glad. I don't want to be on another committee." I've heard a lot of that. So I think there's really possible to get input from all the different communities. These folks all have different communities they represent or that they are familiar with, and you know me, I could go on all night, but thank you for the attention you're giving us.
Thank you, Mrs. Walsh. And before we proceed, Mr. Gito, you wanted a comment, and then I'll come back to you guys.
Yes, I did.
Oh, Mr. Gito.
This is an excellent opportunity for educating people about the history of the town. When it started, it was a lot bigger than it is now, and people should know that, and people could know that. If you were to involve the school system as well, you would have a lot of parents, you would have a lot of children, and you would have a lot of interest. And there are so many things that you could do with that history in terms of bringing life to, to what this part of the country was. That's my only comment, and I can talk with you later about that.
And before we close tonight, I would like each of you to, to say a few words, like, what really are you passionate about? What idea for this 300th? Just really quick, and then, Doctor, please, you, you start us off.
What I wanted to say is, I just want to make sure that everyone is sworn in, because that will hinder us from being able to move forward with the meeting. And that's just a side thing. I just want to make sure that.
Excellent, Doctor. Is everyone sworn in?
I have been.
Okay. Maybe it's one. You have not. You need to be sworn in by the clerk?
Madam Chair, would you like to take a vote, making it a seven-person committee?
Yes, please. I'm open to a motion.
I, I would suggest that, that we allow the committee to decide what skills they need and how many people they need, rather than our setting a bound. I mean, if we want to, if we want to say, well, you know, we could include, increase it by some, that's fine. But, you know, this is going to take a while, and there are a lot of different avenues that people can go in.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
So I mean, I'm...
May I, may I say something about that?
Yes, please, Doctor.
I think five, I think what you have here is a good start, and what I like about this group is you mentioned, when we ident... this group is, you mentioned, when we identify what activities will take place throughout the year, and the skill set we need, then we have an opportunity to bring more people into the committee for specific jobs. So, I just wanted to share that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Carrara?
The reason, the reason I said seven was, it, it gives you the strong base of the committee. Doesn't mean people can't join in. It just says, these are like the directors.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
This gentleman here, Scott, he might have people who got strong suits in another direction. Cynthia has, David Allen Lambert, the history, it's there. We don't need to keep piling people in. They'll be part of the committee, but they're underneath these directors.
Yes.
So, you gotta, you gotta finish something someplace. And I do agree with Lou, I was going to say something, but he said it. I was wondering, that you bring the schools in, maybe you could give them a task of saying, let the elementary schools decide what banner, and have a contest, and see who can win. That'll be something that's like ongoing. And then, if you want them all to have a banner for each school, maybe each one, but they could design something to help, and then they're all involved, and it just ignites, because then it's going to travel.
Right. And then, I was going to, and I was just going to ask, you're here, you have our attention. If you want it seven, we can vote on it now to add additional two. If you don't want to move forward, that's, okay. We just need someone to take the lead to post the meeting, and then I will be there, at least to, to help with getting things and re-energizing, if that's what you need, whatever you need. I'll be there. And then, Mr. McCrisky?
Just, I agree, I agree. I believe right now, five works. And Ms. Walsh, remember, we didn't have seven, we had five. And again, through the events, we brought people on. Five people represent the entire town. I believe five people can get us a heck of an event.
Yes.
And if they feel they need help and need another couple of members, or if somebody wanted to become a part of the committee, we don't want to lose them, bring them forward. You know, but I'd rather just see, let them go until they decide they need more people. Because, you know, the more people, sometimes, look at, look at what we go through, folks, when we hit 11 o'clock, talking about something, and we keep talking. You know, so we don't want to get too heavy with the committee, and, you know, it, I think it'll work. We've got good people here, great experience on there, and, you know, some committees don't have a David Allen Lambert, and so that's happened.
Right, right. Think about music, too. Get some, some music going.
She's a party animal, too, so we gotta get, you know, I'm telling you, she wants to dance, this woman.
I don't know if I'm a party animal, but I love good music. I love it. Well, before we get, before we go on, we're going to pass the mic on. What are your ideas, like, two minutes, because we, we need to get to a couple of other agenda items? Just like, take a minute, like, what, what's your passion about? What, what is your passion for, to express for this, this event? Like, what do you really want to see?
As a retired elementary school principal, my passion is the whole, the schools, the youth, the, anything that has to do with young people.
Yes.
And indigenous people. Those are the two things that are, you know.
That's great. Mrs. Walsh?
Um, I'll bet cleanup.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I forgot, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Santos.
Santos, Mr. Santos. What do you think?
Well, I'm happy to be a part of it.
Yes, we are, too.
I, I'm geared towards helping in a big way, where a bunch of people, different people, solving, resolving, figuring out a way. I have a keen ability of just solving issues, or making things come together.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. And how about you?
I have a lot of ideas.
That's great.
They keep me up at night. I, I feel very excited about it. I think 300 is a real important thing. I want the kids that are in Stoughton today to remember that this, they were part of this town on the 300th. I expect an awful big parade, a good parade, not-
Ooh, yes.
-a parade of trucks, a parade of floats, a parade of, of, and, and I hope to be able to do things like go to marketing of companies that can sponsor some of these things. And I personally want to see a gala ball. I never, I, I feel that that's a big thing, and it's getting dressed up, and everybody, meeting everybody in town, and talk about diversity, I think it'd be great.
That would be so wonderful.
But those are the things that just drive me crazy. But I like to see contests. As the society knows, I like to see things that are contests, that kids have a real prize, not just, oh, go home and color a picture of Lincoln and, and send, no. I want to see it put on display somewhere, and so that their parents, their aunts, their uncles, and so forth can see that. Or, if it's an essay, let there be a good prize, and, and get them involved. And I would like to see the parade involved on some of the past of Stoughton. There's a lot of important things that the Historical Society has on display that nobody knows about. And I think that they could make some nice floats with it.
That is so wonderful to hear. So, my ask is that you meet, within the next couple of weeks, we did have you schedule and, for the first week, for, for our first select board meeting in February as well. But, that can be pushed out if you need more time to get organized, and, and start developing an action plan. So, I will be there, I'll be watching your, your website, and maybe we need to put something on, on the town's website and call it the 300th, so we know when you're meeting, so if people want to join in and have comments, that they, or just listen to what you have to say. That would be so great. So, thank you so much for showing up tonight, and please get organized and schedule your first meeting. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Walsh?
Well, I mean, we, just sitting here, we've got all the events planned, we just have to plug them into calendars now. I just want to say, I've been serving the town of Stoughton since 1969. When Stoughton turns 300, I'll be turning 79. I like to think that this might be my crowning achievement, other than my teaching career. So, you know I'll put a lot of effort into it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you. It's so great to see you again. Gets worn in. So, we're a little behind on our, on our agenda. The budget was to be at 7:30. We do have a public hearing that was to start at 7:55. So, with my discretion, we're going to take the public hearing.
I agree.
And that would be, this is a common vic application. Will the owner or representative step forward?
Madam Chair, comment?
Yes, Mr.?
We do have another time slot at 9:20. May I suggest that we deal with the public hearing, and with the other appointments, because I know there are people online waiting for them.
Okay.
And we'll deal with the budget last.
Thank you very much. That's a great idea. Thank you. Please, please have a seat, and bef, I mean, at the table.
Over here.
Yes, uh-huh. So, before you, this is all new to a lot of residents, so I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about the process. So, first, we'll read the, the hearing into the record. Then, we'll make a motion to up, to open the public hearing, then we'll take a vote to do that, and we'll give a little background, and then we'll ask you to introduce yourself, and say your affiliation with the establishment. The board members will ask you questions. Citizens will ask you questions. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a vote.
Sure.
Okay, good. So, just wanted you to know what's coming, because sometimes it gets a little confusing from those. Vice Chair Cavey, can I ask you to read into the records, please?
Sure. Town of Stoughton, Notice of Hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on January 17th, 2024, to consider the application of Smack Pizza Incorporated, doing business as Nikos of New York, for a common vicular license at 11, sorry, 111 Sharon Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. The hearing will be held at 7:55 PM, will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment are available by calling the Select Board Office at 71-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to lwilson@stoughton-me.gov by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board acting as the local licensing authority.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavey. May I have a motion to open the public hearing? And may I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote, vote aye as well. A little background, Vice Chair Cavey?
Sure. So, we received comments from the town departments, Stoughton Police Department, Fire Department, Building Inspector's Office, Treasurer's Office, and Water, all had, gave their okay with no comments. Board of Health gave their okay, but with some comments, which I'm going to read briefly here. This is a letter that was dated 10/20, well, let me, let me, let me just get to it. 10/25/22, so some of this information might be out of date. We'll just rely on, on town manager and town engineer to provide us with better information if necessary. But, their comments are, we have just received the Board of Health FA application yesterday from Nikos of New York, proposed pizza parlor at 111 Sharon Street. This one has not yet had, nor have they requested their required pre-operation food safety inspection by the Board of Health. This inspection cannot be performed until all interior work and permits through the Building Department for the total renovation change for that space, for a retail, from a retail phone store to a restaurant, have been completed. Also, their proposed dumpster location will require one or more Board of Health variances, which have not yet been applied for, but they have been given an application yesterday, unless they install a compliant dumpster pad for which. So, this was, I mentioned, this is several months old. I'm assuming that most of these, these issues have been resolved by this point?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just, I just wanted to read that, because sometimes there's helpful information here, but it sounds like it's a little bit outdated at this point. So, with that, the Board of Health has also given their okay to this application.
And with that, please introduce yourself, and tell us your affiliation with Smack Pizza, or is it Nikos of New York, doing business as Niko?
It's Nikos of New York. My name is Niko Salome. I'm the owner of Nikos of New York, at 111 Sharon Street.
So, this is a pizza establishment. You come in, just, just tell us a little bit. They sit at the table, or they can take out pizza?
So, previous to this, I had a bigger location in the city of Framingham. I had two places. And be, due to COVID, and, you know, the lack of workers, it was very difficult for me. I was interested in this space, because it's a smaller space, and we're focusing on just making pizza, a few salads. And the design is, when you come in, there are a few high-stool chairs in the front, on like an armrest bar area, and people could sit down, have a slice, enjoy a meal there, or they could order something to go. As far as, we also going to provide delivery through Grubhub and DoorDash.
Great. I'll ask my fellow board members if they have any questions or comments to you. I think Mr. Carrara is first.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to Mr. Salome. So, you're saying that the Board of Health stuff's been all addressed?
Yes.
All right.
I, Larry, my health inspector, he came in, he signed off, and everything. I have the signed paper at the store now. And I also received my food permit, I believe, in the mail as well.
I, I was looking at the, the grease trap, and it's, it's a little vague. There's, the information isn't filled out for how many gallons, or the size, or, do you have somebody that's going to be taking the grease that you clean out of there, or did you hire somebody that will do that?
Well, um-
That's in here.
I have, I have, I have an automatic grease trap that we've installed. So, the automatic grease trap, what it does is, it skims off the grease, and it automatically dumps it into a container. And it's a part of like a time, time program, and it dumps the grease into a container. After, you know, a certain amount, a certain amount is accumulated, I just grab the container, and I walk outside, and I dump it into my own receptacle or drum, provided by Baker Commodities.
Okay, that, that's what I was looking for, is that a licensed guy was handling it.
Right.
The only other question I had was, you filled out your workman's comp that you're only one person, but you use the word "we."
Right. Well, I, I believe we're going to have more than just me working there, but I'll, I'll have my agent look into that, and I'll get that corrected.
That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. Any other questions?
I have one question.
Okay, Vice Chair Cavey?
Actually, I should say two questions. So, the first one, let's get, let's do the business first, and the fun later. But the first one is, I noticed you have, your application has no table seating, it's only counter seating, is that, I just want to make sure that's correct?
Yeah, initially, I wanted to put a table or two, but, you know, that doesn't, wasn't going to work out for the, when you walk in. I don't want customers all gathered up against each other, so I ended up doing a bar against the wall. And I'm just going to put a couple of stools there, rather than the initial way that I was going to go about it, by putting some tables.
Perfect. Okay, I appreciate that. The other question is, is a question I, I love to know about restaurants, and I'm just looking for the menu. Looking for like, any, any specials that you recommend, you know, anything that you, you kind of like, that you think people should, should know, who are interested in your restaurant?
Well, we, we had a, you know, a huge following online on social media, and a lot of people love our pizza. And the number one selling pizza, or two of our best-selling pizzas, is a pizza called the Brooklyn, and that's pepperoni, sausage, roasted garlic, and ricotta. And then, there's another one called the NYC Original, which is more of a simplistic pizza.
You read that already?
But it's garlic infused. So, those are our two most popular pizzas.
Yeah, can't go wrong. That sounds awesome. I'm looking forward to it. I'll be like-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Gito?
We got a, a long set of information from Framingham.
Can you speak a little louder, Mr. Gito? Is it on?
I think it is.
Testing?
Hello?
Yeah.
There you go. We got a very long set of information from Framingham, indicating that some of the interactions you had with the Health Department were not what I would consider very friendly. And-
I could, I don't mean to stop you there, but if you would allow me, I'd like to elaborate on that.
Yes, please do.
I think I know where you're going with this, and I know very well. In Framingham, I initially opened up my store in 2014- I initially opened up my store in 2014, 2015, okay? And it was my very first store. And I ended up having an unbelievable start and an unbelievable following. I had a partner, and then a lot of people got involved, and basically my initial business was snatched away from me. 2019, I came back and I opened up in another area in Framingham. And then COVID happened. What happened was, we started posting and getting a part of these social forums on Facebook. So what had happened was, we ended up getting people that traveled from New Hampshire, Springfield, all these different areas in Boston and outside of the state to come and travel and try Nikos. What had happened was, we ended up getting a lot of, a lot of, a lot of light shined on Nikos. And a lot of people would come in to try the food, take pictures, and then we got into...
Excuse me?
Yes.
Excuse me, or, we're confused. What are you, are you talking about this establishment, or?
Yeah, because Nikos of New York, I had initially opened it in Framingham. Nikos of New York...
If I can, right there.
Yes.
I don't know what information, I didn't see any information from Framingham.
Right.
I don't know why it's relevant at this. Am I missing something?
Yes.
I was trying to...
What did I miss?
There was, there was a letter that came in on this, on this project.
Where?
It was in, it was in the packet, I thought.
I just went through my packet. I don't see anything here of any letter from Framingham.
I don't know where I got it, then.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a...
Well, no, no, if you will, just please. I don't see a letter. I'm not gonna take into consideration a letter in a public hearing that's before this board now unless I can read it. I don't know what we're talking about. I know disrespect, Mr. Gito, maybe you have it, but I don't.
I don't have any, any special relationship with...
I'm not saying you are. I just, I just don't have the letter that you're referring to. Unless somebody else has it.
Could we take a minute, then? Do you wanna take a...
Again, I haven't had the chance to read that letter.
Well, that's not my fault.
Well, if I don't have it, Mr. Gito, if I don't have it, I can't make a call. I don't have it. I'm looking in my packet, I don't have it here. I don't recall seeing an email that came to me. So again, you know, this is a hearing that we have before this board as licensing authority. I don't have a letter that I can take into consideration.
If you would give me a moment to find out where that came from, that would be very helpful.
Well, I don't have time to call and validate anything in Framingham tonight, if I were to get that letter.
So, so the letter in Framingham...
So what are you saying, that I have information that no one else has?
No, I'm not saying anything, Mr. Gito. I'm quoting you, Mr. Gito, when you've said many times, "I don't have anything here to look at," and you've said, "I don't think we should talk about this right now."
That's fine. I...
That, that's why I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
I'm happy, I'm happy not to talk about it right now. And to, all I would suggest is that we do whatever we're going to do, but then not close the hearing, and look at that other information. I don't know whether it's relevant or not relevant.
Does anybody else have this letter?
I don't have it.
Well, let me see if I, if you would give me a minute, then.
Yes. I think he is, too. Let's suspend the public hearing for two minutes so we can find the letter. And from me personally, I'm trying to understand the relevance of a letter from a Framingham establishment has to do...
No, I'm, I'm, I'm...
I wouldn't say anything until we have a letter, honestly. You know, protect yourself, because it may be irrelevant, you know, so I don't know. I'm not, I'm not casting aspersions here. I just...
No, no, I understand. I'm aware of where it came from. It didn't come from like the City Hall of Framingham. The person's actually watching along right now. I just noticed the name on the screen, so...
Okay, all right. If this was an official document, again, I've just, I made a dippa danta to you.
So do we recess for two minutes while we try to find this letter?
I don't want to see the letter at this point. If we're making a decision tonight, I'm ready to make a decision. That's me.
Yeah.
You know, unless this was an official letter from a town, that, you know, that anybody here, the town manager, the Director of Development Services, who oversees that department, feels that this meeting should be postponed, I'm open ears, for whatever reason. But I haven't heard either one of them say a word yet, and continuously have seen the town manager shake his head. So, you want to take a break? Take it, but...
There's a letter, it wasn't, to my knowledge, part of this package. I have not seen a letter from Framingham.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think there, I received an email with information I can't verify in any way whatsoever. So I have not considered any of this as part of, as part of the package. But the, well, I received an email with a link with emails.
Yes.
But I, I didn't, I'm not gonna ver, it was sent to me from somebody I don't know. I can't verify any of the information. It was sent to our email addresses.
That's what it was, yes.
But, but I, I'm...
Sounds like retaliation.
Yes, but I, yeah, I don't, but unfortunately, that is not relevant in my mind to the questions that we currently have at hand. And I'm spending the time to validate...
Right. Continue. I have the notice from, every department signed off. There's a Board of Health comment, and the last line says, "I have no objection..."
There we go.
"...to Niko operating for takeout only provided the onsite grease dumpster is brought into compliance within the next week as required by Board of Health recent order." And this is dated December 29, 2022. Vice Chair Cavie alluded to this earlier.
I found that email.
You found that?
Yes. And basically, it was a, an email from a fellow named George Stevenson, and it had a link to a lot of material that was going on with, with letters back and forth between Nikos and the Board of Health. And I went through that, as I would expect that anyone would do if they got something like that. And the, some of the interactions were, were, as I said, not terribly friendly. And I was just questioning that. But, but we, I believe, let's see, the list of people were all of the members of the Board of Selectmen. So you got it on the 13th of January. We all did. So that's the, that is the reference that I was, that I was...
It was a letter from an individual that we don't know.
No, no, a letter, let me finish. The letter from an individual that we don't know, indicating a sort of clips of documents going back and forth between the business and the Board of Health in Framingham. And so that's, that's what I was talking about. We can choose to deal with that or not deal with that. It just, we all had, had it.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Mr. McCrisky?
I have, I don't know this gentleman. I have no idea whether, whether he's a wonderful person or has horns. It all depends on who you talk to, I guess.
Right. Mr. McCrisky?
It's irrelevant. It doesn't refer to anything that's binding. It may be somebody that had exchanges. But again, this is a business coming to our town. We set the criteria. This individual's been vetted by our town department heads. They've signed off. He's done everything that's been asked of him to do. And, you know, I'm sorry, this is not how you show business friendly, is to go into there, this, and to bring something up there that cannot be validated. You know, and again, I saw an email. I didn't see any official notification. I didn't see anything that stops me from issuing a license. Everybody runs their business a different way. If this gentleman were to come into this town and talk to department heads in this town differently, he may have an issue. Who knows? But we're gonna stand up for what's right for the town of Stoughton. But having something that come in as an email, that's not a part of the packet, that wasn't vetted, that nobody had reached out to anybody from, that I know of, to the town of Framingham, and asked if there was any outstanding issues, if we did, that would be a new chapter of vetting somebody, and it would be probably illegal to do it in this case, because we've never done it before. So, I mean, this has taken on well too long of a discussion of our time. We have an applicant that's been vetted through our department heads. Let's vote on it.
Okay. Before we do, we have to move forward, or citizens' comments. And I, for the record, I do have copies of the certified mail that went out to the abutters for Nikos of New York. So I have that in my hand.
I don't see anybody. Motion to close the hearing.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Motion to grant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as, okay, one abstention for the records, four in favor, and congratulations.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
Sorry for wasting some of your time.
Thank you.
You heard me. You heard me. I said, "I apologize for wasting some of his time," because I think it was a total waste of some of his time. And I'm entitled to my opinion like you are, Mr. Gito.
Next on the agenda is the Personnel Bylaws.
I would say the same. It's amazing.
And that is Attorney Dolan. He should be online. And is Deanna and Tracy also online? This agenda item is the request for Stoughton's Personnel Bylaw, the Case for Change. It's a revised, consolidated personnel bylaw. With that said, Attorney Dolan.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, Jack.
Yes, sir, we can.
I apologize for the slight technological glitch there. I'm in my car on the way back from another Selectmen's meeting, but I'd be happy to address the bylaw and any concerns you may have about it. So hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at the draft Personnel Bylaw. There were two, two parts to it. One is a draft Warren article, which is really just almost boilerplate Warren article language referencing the draft itself. And then the Warren article is really intended to, the bylaw is intended to provide a framework for the creation of a personnel system that would be administered on a daily basis by the town manager, but based on policies adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And the draft bylaw describes what the complete personnel system or human resources system would consist of. It contains a process for adoption and amendment of personnel policies. I recall when I appeared before you previously, there was a concern about whether those policies would be adopted by the board to be consistent with the town charter. And this policy, this draft policy, does provide for the adoption of the policies by the Board of Selectmen consistent with your charter.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coulter?
Madam Chair, excuse me for my hoarse voice. I've had the opportunity to read and study the bylaw that was drafted by council. It, it couldn't fit any better, hand in glove, with what we're lacking right now in terms of policies, procedures, job descriptions, and the like. It's, it's exactly what we need. We're very pleased with the draft, and I'd like to congratulate Jack for his work on that draft. I would strongly recommend that it receive an affirmative vote of this board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter, and thank you very much, Attorney Dolan. Are there any questions from my fellow board members?
Madam Chairman, I have, I got a comment, and I did run it by the town manager, that the current Personnel Bylaw, which I do have in my bag, which is 11 pages, that was voted in by town meeting. So we have to vote that one out before this one can take its place. So I'm just, I just want you to know that if we give this a blessing, this has to go, and it's gotta be all on the same thing, show the original, the motion to get rid of it, and then the motion to insert this will have to take place at an article on town meeting.
Rescind and replace.
Yeah.
Jack, if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Jack, do you agree with that? We have to rescind and replace from town meeting?
I think it can be done in, in one fell swoop, if you will.
Yes.
The draft Warren article I prepared, I'll just read it if the board doesn't mind. It's very brief, but I think it, it answers the question. The draft article would read as follows, "To see if the town will vote to repeal and replace the current, quote, 'Town of Stoughton Personnel Bylaw,' close quote, with the proposed, quote, 'revised, consolidated personnel bylaw,' close quote, or take any other action relative thereto." So this one Warren article provides for the repeal of the existing bylaw and its replacement with the proposed draft bylaw that you have.
Yes. Sounds like that covers everything that Mr. Carrara mentioned. Are there any other comments? A motion to proceed, that is, to accept?
Motion to accept the revised Personnel Bylaw change, and to continue on to dispose of the old one and use this.
And can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Unanimous decision. Thank you very much. Thank you, Attorney Dolan.
Thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you, Mr. Coulter, for your kind words.
Just as you wrote it, Jack. Thank you.
Moving right along to our next agenda item, which is the joint meeting. Could I ask the delegates of Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, Community Preservation Committee, the Planning Board to step forward? We do have seats to accommodate you if your, if your committee, board members want to sit. Oh, yeah, we have tables and chairs for you. If, if we need extra, you can sit wherever you want. Yes.
Want me to bring the mic over?
Yes, please. Oh, we need more mics. Let me ask Smack, what I would, as you're settling in, let me see if I can get more mics.
They get one more. They can just hand it over now. We do a town meeting.
Okay, they need some on that side?
You need one more over there, I guess?
Thank you so much, Captain.
Just four?
Just maybe one for over there, too.
At the open.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they should both have.
So as you get settled in, I would like each board and commission to, to open your meeting.
Madam Chair.
And we'll do a round robin. Okay, yes, Mr. Zemanian.
Yeah, if I might, I'd like to open the Redevelopment Authority's meeting, seeing as how I can see a quorum. Some of my members are virtual. To Reggie and Roberta, I would like a motion to open the meeting, please, for the Redevelopment Authority.
So made.
Thank you, Reggie. This is gonna be by roll call, where some of our members are hybrid. Reggie?
Aye.
Roberta?
Present.
And I vote yes. And on a secondary basis, I'd like to open the Community Preservation Committee's meeting. This will also be done by roll call, where I see one of the members. Can I have a motion, gentlemen, to open our meeting?
Second.
Have a second? Thank you, John. By roll call, John Linehan?
Yes, here.
Michael Barrett?
Yes.
John Morton?
Yes.
Dwight?
Yes.
Rich Terry?
Yeah.
And I vote yes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian, for the Planning Board.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to open up the Planning Board meeting. We do have a quorum here. I don't believe anybody is online. Our quorum is here. So could I have a motion to open up the meeting?
So made.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Paul Demus.
You are, you are there also. I'm sorry. Okay, I got a second? So we have a second. Of the roll call vote, because we do have somebody who is remote, Paul Demus.
Yes.
Richard Terry?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I vote yes? And I vote yes. Our meeting is now open, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. I am so happy to see everyone. Did you want to do a round robin, introduce yourself, and state your affiliations, so we can get it on record who everyone is in attendance? And then I'll allow Mrs. Pam McCarthy to say a few words about the survey we took, and then we'll jump right into the business at hand. Thank you very much.
Paul Beliveau, 33 Cannell Drive, member of the Planning Board, and also a town rep.
Mark Zemanian, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee in the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority.
Dan Kelly, Chair of the Planning Board.
John Linehan, Member of the Community Preservation Committee.
Want to use the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
John Linehan, Member of the Community Preservation Committee, representing open space.
Michael Barrett, 18 Chipman Lane. I am on the Community Preservation Committee, of which I'm also serving as treasurer.
I'm John Morton. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee, representing the Conservation Commission.
Great. And online we have?
Dwight McCann.
Dwight McCann, Member of the CPC, representing the Historical Commission.
Eric Castle, the Program Administrator for the Community Preservation Committee.
Paul DeMuse, Member of the Planning Board.
Back, Redevelopment Authority.
Reggie Nunley, 33 Hillside Ave, Member of the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority, and also their treasurer.
Is there anyone else that we're missing? Okay, so we've covered everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much for showing up tonight.
And Pam McCarthy.
And Pam McCarthy? Yeah. Pam McCarthy? Did you want to say a few words about the survey or introduce the topic, and then we will move forward?
Yes, I believe at a prior meeting that Mark Tisdale went over the survey results, but on behalf of the Select Board, when he was the interim town manager, he asked me to do a special capital projects survey, which I had done. And it was, I believe there were six projects that we asked the community for their opinion on. Let's see. One was online permitting software, the renovation of the police station, ADA improvements for the Lucius Clap Building, armory building stabilization. That's one of the items we're here to discuss for that topic. Thirty-four percent, actually, no, it was 27% of those surveyed thought it was of high importance to do something with that property. Another item was the town hall parking lot and the train station renovation reuse on that one. Approximately 60% of the survey respondents felt that that was important or very important to do something with the building at this time. And then, as we move forward tonight, I do have some additional information on the Train Depot, on a grant I had gotten, and some information on the armory, some research I had done in the past.
Thank you very much. Now, is it everyone's understanding that we decided to settle on the Train Depot station as a multipurpose center?
First time I'm here.
I don't believe there was ever a definitive set of what we were doing with the Train Depot, or something that when we purchased it, before we purchased and after we purchased it, a lot of people had a lot of, I'm sorry, a lot of people had a lot of ideas, there was a lot of things been brought around, but nothing had ever been definitively decided on how that was going to go move forward. And I think that's where the position we're still in. I don't know of any definitive plan as far as anybody going in there, or what can be done going forward. So whether it was multi-use restaurant or whatever, nothing's been decided as far as I know.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Next, Mr. McChrisky, and then Mr. Coulter, and then Mr. Zemanian.
Right, there's correct. We've never taken a formal vote of what we're going to do. I understand that we'll get a grant that will allow the public to say what they want to see in there, but if anybody that's here has been involved in any of the conversations or watched any of the meetings, we've talked about everything, of putting it out to bid, no responses. You know, different ideas, these go back three to four years on a brewery, but nobody wants to put the money into the station it takes to do something of that standard. And then, as the property owners, we would have to spend quite a bit of money. And I think at the time, I recall people saying they were hesitant to put a lot of money in it at this time, because we were just coming off a new high school, we're going on to a fire station, you know, there were so many other needs that were more important. I think at the time, I shouldn't maybe not say more important, but, you know, to be talking about putting millions of dollars into that station, you know, to get a use that really isn't going to be in the town's best interest. So I'm eager to hear that I believe Ms. McCarthy has a grant that's applied for, that maybe in its final stages, that will say to the residents, what would you like to see with the train station and how it will be done? In the interim, I gave you my update at the beginning of this meeting, that there's things that we can do with it until we get the big picture. And there's a lot, there's hundreds of ideas that could be done with that place, you know, even if it's not something that's big and grandioso, and we get it back on, you know, to look like the Gilded Age once again, which it can, and I was just in there today, and that's a beautiful building. But I look forward to, you know, the next step in finding out what the community wants for it. And until then, you know, we can do some things on the small, you know, stage, just to get things moving, so. But I agree, we haven't taken a formal vote yet. So I think that's what the discussion is. Where do we want to go? How much do we want to spend? Who's willing to make a commitment, you know, as to a town meeting article? And, you know, so that's, I'm curious to hear from everyone else.
Thank you, and Mr. Coulter.
Madam Chairman, I couldn't say that any better than Mr. McChristy. When I first arrived five weeks ago, the objective was to look at the non-performing assets we have in the town and find out what we can do short-term to utilize them, and what is the long-term vision for each of those buildings, if there is a long-term vision for all of those buildings. So I asked Mr. McChristy to look into it as to how to get the building cleaned and heated. No major capital expenses, some utilities run to it, the heat put on, the place cleaned, it could be a social gathering place in the short term. But that's one of the reasons we were hoping for this meeting tonight, just to look at the results of the survey, to listen to Pam, who's got a lot of ideas on this, with respect to grant money for planning purposes, even for construction purposes down the road. I do believe this would be a great point of interest of mass development for a Mass Works grant, should we have consensus on what we want to do with the building. But I don't feel good about leaving buildings that are undeveloped and deteriorating every day around town. It just doesn't speak well of us as a town. It doesn't serve us well financially, and I think we're better than that. So I'm looking to hopefully, very aggressively, look to either come up with a plan for reuse and redevelopment, or sell the properties and move on, and put it back on the tax roll. I know for five weeks being here, that's probably a very direct statement to make, but I've heard dozens of grand plans over dozens of years, and I think now's the time of reckoning to make a decision on what the town leaders in this room want to do with these properties.
Thank you very much. And next was Mr. Zemanian, and then Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to follow up with something Mr. Kelly had said about not having a clear direction as of yet. I know Ms. McCarthy is, or has been recently ascertained a grant to look into the best use. Can you hear that already? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry about that. I know there's been a grant applied for, and we received that. I'm not sure what the status of that at this point is, but I bring this up because Mr. Jafun had come to the CPC for somewhere between 2.9 and 4.8 million to rehabilitate this building to the point where it could be what we call a vanilla box, meaning anything can go in there. One of the concerns the Community Preservation had at that time was, great, what's the use? I don't want to invest our taxpayers' money into something if there's not a future, a definitive future, what we're going to plan to do with the building. From the Redevelopment Authority's position, if the building was to be turned over to us, we would rehabilitate it and redevelop it. From a community preservation outlook, though, it's very different. So we can put monies into projects in the town that will improve the quality of life for its residents. Certainly, a community center in a building with significant historical value would meet that criteria. The issue we had was simply, what are we going to do with it? Because I don't want to mothball it after we go through the rehab. And that was our concern, so I think I can speak for the CPC by saying, we weren't against the idea, but we wanted a future. We wanted to know what we were using it for. And I'm glad Mr. Kelly brought that up earlier, because I don't know that we have a definitive plan at this point. And I look forward to working with members of the Select Board and anybody else who wants to talk about this, but until we have that plan, we're kind of stuck.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Mr. Kelly.
Mark, thank you. That spells out a lot of what I was trying to say. And Mr. Coulter, we haven't met yet, but I really appreciate your sentiment, because I've been trying to preach that for many years with this town, about having buildings that are sitting, that we have, that are great assets to the town, great historical assets, but we're not doing anything with them. And they're sitting rotting. We're spending a lot of money to try to maintain them, and it doesn't get us anywhere. So I'd like to see that we can get some leadership to be able to go forward and do something with not only this building, but there are several buildings in town. But I look forward to working with you and whoever else wants to do it, to deal with that, because I think it's really important for the town, as we either try to acquire properties going forward, that we know what we're doing with them, or have figured out a way to deal with the properties that we presently have. It's just, unfortunately, we're at a position where we don't have the money to do everything that we need to do, but we have a lot of properties that we need to do something with. So I'm glad that we're all here together, because these are the people that are going to at least try to get something to make it happen in the town, and I hope it does happen, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
So as a placeholder, and we'll come back to what I heard consistently, it's a short-term and a long-term best use for, and we're talking about the depot right now. We'll talk about the armory in a few minutes, but we want to make sure we're all on the same page with the depot. Ms. McCarthy?
If it's all right with you, I could take a couple of minutes and just give the history of the grant and some of the things we've done in the past.
Absolutely.
So I think this was before we even completed the purchase on the building. I had said we needed to look at it as short-term use versus long-term use. I had talked to the building commissioner at the time, and he had said if we could just make it safe, do whatever we needed to do to make the building safe, we could have some temporary type uses in there. Things like, you know, a market for artists to sell their wares, it's called a make-it-market, pop-up stores, and then I also suggested a space for theater slash musical performances way back then. So that's something to look at while we're trying to figure out what to do long-term. What we had done, too, was we had gotten a couple of small grants. Once the purchase was complete, I worked with Paul Jafun to get grants to make the building buttoned up and get rid of the hazardous waste. We got a Mass Works grant for $50,000 to get rid of, I learned what guano was, bird poop, so we got a grant to get rid of things like that, and, you know, the work that they had started to do on the roof and things like that. So at least we were able to get the process started. And then I had talked to, I had worked with Fran, and the Select Board was involved in the process, and Dr. Grimm, and worked to put out a request for interest, just to see what type of response we would get. So I helped to put together the wording for that, and we specifically had put in there that we thought that whatever use went in there, we were hoping that there'd still be access for the community to use the building for certain events, and possibly maybe even have a space available for local art exhibits. So we did get two responses for that request for interest. One was from a brewery, and one was from a restaurant. Both of them were willing to do something like that. And then what I ended up doing was, because we had talked over the years of what the use should be, because on the Randolph Savings Bank, I was able to get a grant to build consensus as to what the use of that property would be, it made sense to do the same thing for the depot. In fact, I tried to do it at the same time, but because I didn't have enough funding, I wasn't able to include the depot building in that study at the same time. So I went back to it. So about a year ago, what's called the One Stop Grant Program, which is combined grants, it's Mass Works and EO HED grants, a whole bunch of different grants together, they do an expression of interest. So some of the staff got together, Mark was involved, and the procurement officer, and Paul Jafun, and Dr. Grimm, and we decided certain topics that we should maybe apply for. And one of them that I brought up was the depot doing the highest and best use study, which she supported. So we put in the expression of interest. The state thought that would be a good grant to apply for. So we did put in the full grant application in May of 2022. I did do a presentation before the Select Board in July, just to let them know that I had done that. And that was the same one where representatives of the Little Theater had come, and they were doing cartwheels, and they did this performance at the same time, which I thought was great, because there's a lot of enthusiasm as to getting something going in that building, which we need the foot traffic in the downtown to help with our downtown revitalization. But in October, we were notified that we did get the grant award. And the way that it works is it's a $25,000 award for technical assistance, so we don't even have to go out to bid to get a consultant. We already have a consultant. In fact, it's the same consultant that did the Randolph Savings Bank study. And I actually had met already in December with DHCD and that consultant to go over the scope of services, which I said I wanted to be very similar to what we did for the Randolph Savings Bank. Mark had reviewed the scope with me. We submitted it with a few comments last week, and we're just waiting to sign the contract. And this project actually needs to be completed by the end of June. So once the process for this study starts, it's going to go fairly quickly. So with the Randolph Savings Bank, the way that we did it was, we had some in-house interviews with town staff and officials, seeing what their thoughts were at first, and formulated a survey, that we did a lot of outreach and got out there, had a public forum, talked to the real estate and commercial developers community. And then I added this time that I would like a presentation to be in there for the Select Board at the end of the process, and they had agreed to that. Also, when I was gathering information for the consultant, I did get the report from Paul Jafun that has the architectural report and the cost estimate for the depot. So I have that information, too, which, as everyone knows, is substantial. So that's part of the conversation. I think that's always been the problem, is we have a good idea what we'd like to see there, but trying to figure out who's going to pay for it and how we're going to pay for it has been the stumbling block. But hopefully, at least getting everyone to a consensus as to what we actually want to see done with the property is where we're at, what I'm trying to do right now. So you can let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. To my left, any comments, or just want to make sure I give you ample time and people online. You couldn't hear me, sorry.
I'll make a quick comment, and I am not a town planner, but I do think that we should be thinking in terms of anchor activities for redevelopment of downtown, that's all. It's, you know, I think it'd be It's, you know, I think it'd be great to be a brewery, something like that, with food, but I also know most of the breweries don't have a lot of cash.
Yes, Mr. Nunnely.
Treasurer for the Stoughton Redevelopment Authority. And I've been doing, I've been doing economic development activities for the past 30 years, and it's unbelievable to me that a town or a developer would purchase a building or real estate and not have a idea of what they're going to do with it. But saying that, we have nine major buildings in the downtown section of Stoughton that provide absolutely zero revenue to the town. That's nine buildings in one area that are major buildings that do not provide taxes to the town of Stoughton. My hope is, with this grant that we're receiving, that this will allow some developers to put this back on to the private roles, so that they can provide some revenue, as well as provide the numbers of people to assist with economic development in the downtown area.
Thank you, Mr. Nunnely. Yes, yes.
No, I would second what we've heard from both of the previous speakers. Thank you, Pam. It's great to hear that we got this grant. I think the most important thing we do is come up with a plan. We need to know what we're doing, and what we're doing, both short and long term. CPC meeting, over the last couple of meetings, we've reviewed in detail the financial situation, and while we do have money, we've been collecting money for a lot of years, the last couple of years, we've spent more money than we take in. So, we're starting to eat into those reserves. Our borrowing is probably just under 50% of the event, of the maximum capacity we could do. But with a plan, and something telling us over the next three to five years, what projects the town would like to prioritize, will make our job a whole lot easier in terms of recommending how to use CPC funds to accommodate those projects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes.
Richard Terry, I just want to put out there one thought. This is one of the few buildings in this town that has a national historical registry, registration, and it was because of some volunteers back in the early '70s who raised over $1 million to refurbish that building, which was then owned by the railroad. And I think that should be an underlying reason for us to really, now that we've got a little bit of money on the grant side, to come up with a plan that we can do short and long term. I think we need to honor the volunteers who did work so hard. Back in, a million dollars in 1970 was a lot of money, and it's a beautiful building. I've been in there, I've held functions there. We had a musical, two musicals, two years in a row, and we filled the house. This was about 18 years ago. The building itself, and it's a unique building, there are probably four or five other train stations of similar design, granite, but not with a clock. We've got Canton Junction, we've got one in Abington, that's been a restaurant, we have one in Easton, which is the Historical Society, and used quite a bit, and we have one in Bridgewater, right near the college, which happens to be a McDonald's. I don't advocate that, but there's, and the one in Canton Junction has a successful coffee and doughnuts operation. Two police officers have this side job, and it's working out quite well. So, I think that we're not lacking for ideas, we just have to find one that we can get behind and continue on with the legacy of our volunteers from 1970s. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else online that I'm not, just don't want to overlook anyone? Okay, so, can we make an agreement? Let's talk about short-term first. I don't know if you heard Mr. McCrisky's comments early on, under board meeting comments, that he had National Grid coming in. Was that heat and electricity?
The electricity first, because there is actually not a connection at this time. It's been disconnected from the building, meter has been removed. So, National Grid did contact Paul Jafun today. I made some calls to National Grid, which resulted in a gentleman making a call to the engineer who was handling the job. He was due back from the office today. He called Mr. Jafun this afternoon, which I was amazed with the speed. So, they've taken on this project seriously, so Paul was very excited to speak with him. They talked about the two areas as to where it could come in, and they both agreed that the connection needs to be put in with the meter inside the building, not on the outside, and that it was in the engineer's hands. He said he would call Paul back as soon as possible. After we have the power, Paul is already getting the logistics up, because the water connection needs to be done over, and that is in the works right now to be done over. Once that is done, the gas meter will be reinstalled, which it doesn't have now, so that we can get the heat running. Bill Horn, Stoughton resident, who has a history with that system, told me, and I quote, "I can get that dinosaur running." So, at that time, then, we'll, you know, of course, once the water connection is done, we're definitely going to have to throw on the water connection and have somebody by the shut-off, you know, so that when, when we charge the building, we may find, you know, multiple leaks, who knows? So, Paul is all set up on that. So, we are in a lot better place than we were a few months ago, that at least now, we may be able to get in there and use that building, you know, for just whatever use is, you know, and there's a lot of ideas that people have thrown out. Pop-up, and some things that I mentioned tonight, pop-up, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, small events, readings, groups, you know, a lot that we can do until we come up with what we're going to do long-term. So, at least it gets that building back, providing a service to the community while we wait, you know, for results of something that's more definitive as to what the town's people want to do with it. So, that's, you've got what I gave the board when we started.
Mr. Zemanian, did you have anything to add, or?
I guess it comes down to, how can we help?
Okay, so...
We've been brought here, and we've heard a lot tonight.
Right.
But the question remains, how can we help?
Thank you very much. So, what we've heard so far is, short-term, we can, we're doing some things to get it operational and make it comfortable for those that want to use the facility. We've heard Ms. McCarthy indicate that she already has a consultant in queue, but we all have ideas of what we would like to see. So, we can make a decision tonight, we're all here tonight, what we would like, short-term use, long-term use, or we can go about it another way.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Mr. McCrisky.
No, when you're done, I can...
Okay.
I jump at the opportunity on Mark's question. Reviewing everything with Paul Jafun, right now, that building has been just covered up with plywood here and there. There is a rear door outside that has been nailed, there's probably, it looks like 32 nails that are trying to hold it together.
Seeing it here.
And, you know, just on, you know, a $200,000 figure right now would be utilized for the heaving of the floor in a couple of areas that are just, you know, moving up, and all that requires is to have somebody come in, specializes in floors, just cut reliefs in the floor, re-glue it, nail that, so we have a flat surface. Some of the windows, again, the windows are exposed, as you remember, anyone who's looked at it, the plexiglass and so forth, it's there, is in horrible shape. Shout-out to my good friend, Richard, there, that, up at the Cape and Reynolds, when they had gone up to the Cape and Reynolds house one time and put new plywood up in the windows and made, painted them to look like windows. That's something we can do there, instead of, you know, graffiti on the different panes that we've taken out over the years, and even the plexiglass, if we went with a different type of plexiglass over that, that people could look inside the building. So, you know, and with that, you know, just getting it to the point where we can control it, where it's heated, it's, you know, we have electricity, we could use, we talked about the possibility of being able to get the fireplace going. Looking, you know, just from a, you know, a quick, you know, scope of the area, it looks like the fireplace could be utilized. We have, right now, Little Theater's been in there utilizing it. There, since we've talked about it in the past, I've had people call out, Mark, I've talked with you. I owed Dave Laurie a phone call, you know, on some of the things that we can do short-term, just to get it alive, just to get it moving and doing something. But again, you know, we're looking, you know, Paul said we could easily use $200,000 to do the remainder of updating a bathroom, so it's usable. Wouldn't be handicapped accessible, granted the types of events we wouldn't be able to do, because maybe because it wasn't handicapped accessible. So, you know, just getting the building that a restroom could be usable, have the floors fixed, doors, you know, have new locks put on doors, so that, you know, they're now more secure, you know, that's, as you know, $200,000 wouldn't go very far, but it's a start, until we know what we're going to do with it. So, and that's, eventually, I'd like to see myself, I'd like to see a nonprofit started, you know, to take on the train project. But again, if we end up going the private sector, you know, again, it, at least we have something to show, instead of just broken windows, doors that are left open, you know, bathrooms that don't work, you know, so. And that's what I was going to talk to the town manager, have another chance, so I guess I'll blow it out now, is that, you know, we may want to consider an article, you know, for town meeting, you know. But again, you know, I say that with the knowledge that, you know, you know, there's just, money's not as plentiful, if it is, you know, so it, and I don't believe it's enough time to go through the process for an application before CPC to come up with a laundry list of what needs to be done to make up a town meeting, so I don't think that's going to be an avenue.
Well, actually, through you, Madam Chair, I'm looking at the time, and when you put that number out, I take it that there's some validity to that, you've had conversations with Mr. Jafun.
We'll come up with a list of what it's going to do, and what the, you know, and again, Mark, I'd love to have you a part of that process, but you can't, I guess you can't be on it and vote for it at the same time, but...
Right. My understanding is the warrant is opening tonight. Is that still happening for annual town meeting, Madam Chair, or?
Not...
No, we don't have it on our agenda tonight.
No, it's not tonight.
Oh, maybe I had misinformation.
It's the budget for tonight.
But more importantly, the warrant closes on February 7th, am I correct?
That's what I recall.
Yeah.
So, from a CPC perspective, we literally have one meeting. We've been very busy this year. We have 10 articles going to town meeting, equalling roughly 2.2, just under $1 million, all in cash. I think this committee has worked incredibly hard this year to bring quality stuff to the table. We have certainly heard discussion about the train station in the past, so I don't think we'd be ignorant to the conversation. However, it leaves us with very, very little time. It leaves us with one meeting. I could always call a meeting of the CPC an extra meeting, if the Select Board felt that that was necessary to get this done. If you were to get us an application within the next seven days, that would meet the requirements for our meeting. I obviously can't guarantee what the vote would be on one person of nine, however, CPC, at least in recent memory, has been the only organization to invest money in this. Off the top of my head, we're in about $600,000 between repairs and purchase on this building. So, I can't speak for my members, but I think there's a willingness to see this building function. We have a very small window right now, though. So, if there's a willingness and a desire from the Select Board, then we'd be happy to entertain that, and I would push it, even if it meant having a second meeting prior to the closing of the warrant. It'd be quite a feat, but I've done it before, I can do it again.
If I have...
We lose a draw.
If I have the support of my colleagues, I'll work with Paul Jafun, and we'll get that application submitted, and, you know, with a hit list and, you know, a rough estimate based on, you know, visuals from vendors, you know, to what it would cost. I mean, whether we go out and get official bid specs and that, I think it'd be a little heavy lift, but I can tell you what we'll...
No, I think we need a quote. I think that's, right now, the more important part of it. The official bid specs will have to be a part of the formal article when it goes to town meeting to satisfy the representatives. However, I think the CPC could function off of an actual bid quote for the work, unless any of my members have any disagreements. I'm not seeing any heads shaking back and forth, so, for what it's worth, we do have a scheduled meeting. We have time. Yes, Mike?
I would agree, we can, but one thing I'd ask in that application is that we get a pretty good rundown of all of the money that the CPC has already spent.
Okay, well, I don't have that off the top of my head, so I would yield to your committee.
You're talking about what we've already invested?
What we've, what we got in return. I mean, as I recall, years ago, we put out a warrant for $350,000, most of which was spent.
Right.
The obvious one is the roof, I guess, that you can tell just driving by, but...
Yeah, the roof was done.
I'd like to understand a little bit more about that, personally.
Yeah, I can get the, Barry keeps a record, and I know Barry, you're online here with us, but I know that we redid the support pinions in the building, the roof, the copper works, amongst other minor things beyond...
The skylight.
The actual purchase, yes. And we, from a redevelopment authority standpoint, we've talked in the past about revitalizing the clock in the tower, where there wasn't any discernible actuals on what we were doing with the building. We decided to wait on anything like that until we had some ideas to what we were going to use the building for. I know more recently, the authority has talked about using some Christmas lights on the building to enhance it. One of our members thought that that would be a great idea, and I agree. Anything we can do to draw our attention to it is positive, but I don't want to draw our attention to it right now. I would like it to be open and functioning, so if there was a willingness from the Select Board, we would certainly take this seriously and see if we can't get a positive vote out of it for a recommendation to town meeting.
Madam Chairman, may I?
Yes, Mr. Morton.
I'm 100% in favor of doing what we can to assist with preserving and protecting that building. If this is viewed as an invitation to come to us with a specific proposal, I support that, but I would caution you not to come to us with a huge number at this point.
You heard my number, John.
What's that?
You, I think you heard my number, 200,000 is the number that we had put out, just to be able to get some aesthetics done, so that we can get to the next step. That's only going to be to restructure doors where they actually lock and they're secured, instead of being nailed shut with a piece of plywood over it, maybe either boarding up windows to look nice, that they're painted, you know, to look like windows, or like that was done at the Cape and Reynolds, or to replace plexiglass with something a little thicker, so residents or people can look inside the building and see how beautiful it is. So, the $200,000 figure was just to get us so that we can button this up, and I believe we're going to be able to get the work done with the money that we have, and some articles may have been, that don't have an expenditure yet, that were done, that could be used. And again, I may be talking a little outside what I know. Paul Jafun knows what's going on, and he felt that, you know, we could do, with $200,000, that we could do a lot of work there to make it look better. Take some of the heaves out of the floor, change locks, you know, do a bathroom over so it's usable. And again, the other things, when it comes down to heat, electricity, and the furnace, we believe we can do that with what we have now.
Well, thank you. I mean, that level is reasonable, but I am aware that we have had this creep in that building and in other buildings, where they come back and say, well, we need to do the next, and the next, and the next. At some point, we have to say no, but I, I mean, the, if you can come to us with a proposal that says, this is really what it's going to cost, and this is what we're going to get for it, and this is the timeline, I for one would be quite favorable.
Great, thank you. And again, just as long as my colleagues support me, I'll start on that process tomorrow morning. I'll be, I'll make a point with Paul, and we'll get working on it to get it, and hopefully get it to you before seven days.
So, I asked my fellow board members, how do you wish to proceed? That's the 200, oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I'm just thinking about this whole thing. Has our engineering department, and border health, and police department, and fire department, have they looked at this building and said, you know, in order for this to be a usable thing, that we can allow people to go in, you know, I just don't, I don't see that we've, you know, we're doing a little bit of patchwork here and there, but again, there's still not a full solution to this, or a full judge... here and there, but again, there's still not a, a full solution to this or a full judgment of what it's, what this thing is really going to involve, you know?
Well, I, that's, I agree, that's, that's a valid statement, but what we've got to do is get the building secured and at least functional. It's not condemned. The building structurally is secure. The floor's buckling, but that can be, it's hardwood floors, you slice that, you know, the quick solution. If we can get money for a new hardwood floor, that'd be great. I don't see that happening. So, I think we're going to try to make the best we can with cutting reliefs in there so that the boards can be pushed back down and re-secured, so the floor's flat. But there's not, to my knowledge, anything ever that implied that the building was condemned. It wasn't, it wasn't inhabitable, granted, we got to get the power and all that back up.
Right.
There is somebody I talked to that plans a, an event at Christmas time that they want to be the, like, "Look at this." So, there, there is a goal, and, and I think that will show people something different. So, it, no, I agree, but it's, we've got to at least get the building so we can get it where it's, we can use it as a building.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky, and thank you for the question. Our engineer, Mr. Tisdale, can you weigh in, you know, pros and cons, good or bad? What are, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, my, my thoughts on this, I think Mr. McChrisky's right on point, to be honest with you, and a lot of the comments stated tonight are right on point. I think short, short term is what we focus on now. If it was a long term and a different use goes in there, a lot of different things may have to change from a Board of Health standpoint, from a building department standpoint, code-wise, things of that nature, but the short-term vision, something that Mr. McChrisky's mentioning, I think, wouldn't require many changes to, you know, to the, to the building. And it wouldn't, would not require a specific type of permit through the Building Department to do that. If there's a structural change, like the floors, probably a minor permit, not a big deal. The windows, I don't think are going to be, it's not really a structural change, we're not replacing the windows. So, I think initially, just a short-term approach is key. Once we get to the long-term approach, I think that's where the 2.5, the $4 million number was thrown, was thrown around in the past, be a certain code, triggers will have to be approached.
Madam Chair, if I can to back up what Mark was saying, through this, I've already, I read two studies that were done, and I do have a phone call into the T. Anybody who had anything to do, Mr. Cavey was one, would, getting the paperwork done for us to take possession of the train station will know that the T was not happy with a, with the town of Stoughton. Now, there were comments made, you know, "When you get your, your stuff together, come back and see us," and we finally, you know, Steve got that thing signed, and, but they have access to rail grants. That is still an active rail, and there are grants available through the federal government to be used to rehabilitate train stations on active rails. We need to talk with the T because there's things that we're going to need them to do, but if we could get their blessing, one of the ideas that somebody had was just opening the building up in the winter to allow commuters to come in and stay out of the cold, cold weather. Even if it's at 40 degrees, it's better than two, sitting out on the platform. And then, you could have a local nonprofit selling coffee and muffins or something, or, or the bakery next door, you allow them to satellite in there. So, we're able to take that building to the next level. When we can show the T, who is very difficult to deal with, and there's a couple other people that I, maybe one of them is online, they are very difficult, but they're the same thing, Mark, as you want to see. Show me what you want to do, show me what the money's for, and we sell to them, you know, and the T has access to money that we don't have access to. And I think there's something that could be done there as well. We have a very good congressional and a state delegation. There's been money made from the state. Our state representative and senator have put money in for state grants, and if we could pick up $500,000 here, $500,000 there, you know, there's less that the residents are going to pay. You know, and again, all that's allowing us to do is just step up and get this to be a functioning building that now somebody can say, "Hey, I don't mind putting in $2 million of my own money to make it a small, little brewery," you know, if that's what it takes. Or somebody that wants to come up and, and make it a, some kind of a store, you know, a storefront in a building like that. You know, there's a lot that's out there, and again, like I said, I, myself, would love to see what a survey says, you know, because I, I think there's just a multitude of things that we could do there. But again, it's just, we're right back to square one, getting the building where you can count on it. We've done the roof, we've done all the exposures, the, the flashing with the brass work and that skylight up there was huge. That was the only area that water was actually coming in, you know, but that's been solved. And the things that really, I think, that are there now, and I've got keys, I'll take anybody in there that wants to go in, is I think what we're talking about here is low-hanging fruit. You know, just to, to be able to get to the next level, use it a little bit, make it marketable if it was chose that the residents wanted to do something like that, you know, or if we do a long-term lease with somebody, so.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. Vice Chair Cavey.
So, as a minor point, I just don't want to take credit for something I didn't do. I was involved in the votes, but I just want to give credit to former Select Board member, Mike Sullivan. He did the heaviest of the heavy lifting, but, but I can verify that everything you said is true from the look on his face when he would show up and sort of tell us how the meetings went.
Madam Chair, could I just follow up?
Yes, Mr. Zemanian.
We have had a lot of discussions tonight, and the CPC has invested in the structural integrity of the building. Although it doesn't seem to be the way this conversation is moving, there is another option, and that is to turn it over to the Redevelopment Authority, where they would take it, get a business installed, bring the building up to code, and move it forward there. The difference with that is the likelihood of you continuing to be able to use it as a community-based building is a little less likely. It would be geared more toward private industry where the Redevelopment Authority's focus is to redevelop, and, and that requires that we get some return on our investment. It's something that we've been involved in in the past with the town, and that seems to be a sticky point, but it is another option if you felt that you couldn't continue on the avenue, avenue that we're currently talking about, which, by the way, I prefer at this point in time. I, I like what I'm hearing about short-term usage, get the building functioning. That, that's the number-one priority right now. But it is a consideration for the future to turn a property like this over to the authority, just food for thought.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian.
Can I respond to him?
Yes.
No, Mark, I agree. I totally agree, but I think what we need to do is to let Pam go through her process with the, with the use, what, see what people want, and then that would be our board saying to you the same thing. What are you going to do with it? What's going to be the benefit to the community? Are they going to protect the historical value? Because it is on the National Register of Historic Places, and I think that may be a possibility. I totally agree, and I think that what that would do, long-term, is to show that working relationship between this board and the SRA, okay? And what can happen when we do have, you know, sessions like this? So, it, but no, I agree. I mean, these are what it takes, and sometimes, you know, it just takes everybody coming through, you know, throwing ideas out and see how we move forward. Because right now, we really don't know until everybody in this town can say, "This is what I would like to see."
Yes, and, and frankly, I, I think that we all will benefit from Ms. McCarthy's information she'll get out of that survey and the work she's doing. It's going to be vital to the future of this, so I'm all about the short-term concept here. Just wanted you to be aware, there is a long-term option if the town felt that they just simply couldn't get it done any longer, so.
I don't think it's our job. That would be something right in your wheelhouse.
Well, it's something we're talking about, yeah.
I said before, I, yeah, I said a couple of years ago, when, when the Select Board was talking like real estate agents, and I said, "That's not the job of the Select Board." Not when you have your SRA who, let's, let's remind people that technology drive, when it was done and became the largest piece of tax-producing property in the town of Stoughton, was led by the Redevelopment Authority. Okay? So, we did okay there. I'm sure we could take care of a train station.
Thank you very much. Wait just one minute, Ms. McCarthy. Because Mr. McChrisky made reference to Mr. Laurie, and Mr. Laurie has had his hand up. Although this is not a public hearing, I wanted to hear what Mr. Laurie had to say. Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Chair Roberts. Dave Lurie, Precinct, Precinct 6. There, it might be serendipity, I don't usually use that word very often. There was an earlier conversation with the 300th Committee, and it just seems like the gem of the Raro Depot could be such a great venue that they could take advantage of as one of the options for the way they run the 300th. So, people are saying, "We got the short term, we got the long term." Well, two, two and a half years is kind of in the middle between the short term and the long term. So, maybe that's the impetus when people said, you know, about the project creep of little, little investment here, little investment there, but you put that all together with the impetus being the 300th anniversary, it seems to me that that's enough impetus to kind of put those pieces together until you have it. So, I respect everything that everyone was saying, and I just wanted to share that it is an op, and obviously, I can't speak for the 300th Committee, but wouldn't it be great if they had that as an option, as a venue for entertainment during that celebration right in the center of town?
Thank you very much. So, can we, oh, I'm asking my fellow board members, I have to come back to you, to see what is the will of the board. This is $200,000. Complete the application and get it to CPC. This is the short, short term right now. Long-term will take care of, will be another step. Vice Chair Cavey.
Yeah, Madam Chair, so, from the, from the time when we were first discussing purchasing the, the train station, I've really had two priorities, so every time we come back to it, it comes back to those two. One is secure the building, and we've, we've accomplished that. We have, we own it, and work has been done to minimize damage from water and whatnot. And then, the second one is where we're at right now, which is activating it, turning it into something the town can actually use. And I think for, for $200,000, I think that's, that's an investment worth making. I support it. I think for, for the purposes of a short-term use, the, the options that have been, that I know have been contemplated recently, have had conversations about, all of them are worthwhile and, and worth the, the time and energy of investing in them, so I'm, I'm in support of, of this.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Gito to see if he has any insight or additional insight, or if we can.
I don't think that I have any particular insight, but I think that, that what we have before us in terms of articles to go to town meeting will take up almost all the money that we have available, if I'm not mistaken. I, as I, as I read through the documents that we had, I thought that we had about $47,000 beyond the things that basically required, were required to, to do the things that we needed to do. Now, if the Community Preservation Committee wants to put in $200,000, then that's fine, but we certainly can't do it within, within our operating budget and within the things that we need to buy year to year. And we can't do it when we consider all of the, the capital projects that we haven't been dealing with for the last several years. I mean, we've got reports indicating how much money we have to spend each year just to do maintenance work. So, to, to sit around the table here with, with a whole bunch of wonderful people and say, "Well, let's just put in $200,000 more," I, I have a hard time dealing with that, but, but that's just me.
Okay, so, I get, yeah, Mr. Coulter.
If I may weigh in on that, Madam Chair, I love the idea of getting it up and running. It does two things. It gives us a, an opportunity to use it as a community resource, short-term. It also puts it in a position where it dresses it up if you choose to sell it, long-term, because the stuff you're doing is structural. So, I, I support that idea. I think Joe's volunteer work in that is impeccable. Having said that, I think Mr. Gito's 100% correct as well. There is $0 in the operating budget to do, budgeted right now to do this. So, if the CPC is, is up for that, that's the right source, that's the right resource for capital. There is no money in the operating budget. In fact, this year, before town meeting, there's over $2.5 million for, to redo streets. I get no less than a dozen calls a week on broken Stoughton streets, and other than last year, there was no investment in streets for five years. I get calls every day for potholes. There's been no investment in, in filling potholes. So, every, we get, we have the need to finish putting meters in the town so we can really understand our revenue stream for water and sewage, or water in particular, pardon me. It was turned down at town meeting last year because there was no money. So, I, I hope CPC is, is visionary as Joe is, and that you can support us in this measure, because I can tell you, in the operating budget, there's no money, and in the capital budget, we've, we've committed $10 for every $1 available to us. So, it's, it's important we recognize where we are if we're going to fix everything. So, thank you, Mr. Gito. I think that's a great point. Having said that, I support fully what Mr. McChrisky's doing. I think it's a great short-term plan, and it positions us to go either way, to either use it as a community, or you fix the infrastructure, and if you choose to sell it, you'll get top dollar for it, as opposed to it being a broken-down building. I think the $200,000 investment is very prudent, just not for my budget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Mr. Demuse, he's, has had his hand up for some time. I recognize Paul Demuse.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe Pam McCarthy might be able to answer this. This is on the National Registry. Does that allow us to, federal money, some, sort of a federal grant, maybe?
It does.
It's possible. On the federal level, the only thing that I had already looked in was for the historic tax credits, and I found out if we leased the property, we'd have to have a 29 and a half year lease for anybody to be eligible for that. But, but that is something that we can look into.
Thank you. And also, Ms. McCarthy, you had your hand up for some time, and I wanted to recognize you, and then, Mr. McChrisky.
Okay, I just had two points. Even though we had no electricity and no heat in the building, we have been able to use it for some things. We actually had a couple of open houses, I worked with the Historical Society, and we had an exhibit in there, an open house that the residents came into. The main thing was the floors, so it, it does make sense if we could fix the floors, we wouldn't have that hazard in there. At that time, they just put tables over where it was buckling, and we even had a tour bus come of people that wanted to see where Little Women was filmed, so they managed to film movie scenes in there. So, we have been able to use it for things. So, if we had the heat and bathroom operational and electricity, there are a lot of things we could do with it. But what I wanted to ask was, so, the grant that I have would start up in February, and we were going to have an initial meeting in-house with staff and some officials. I wanted to have that before I got the survey out because I wanted to make sure some of our key ideas were actually on the survey. So, I just wanted to know how you want me to handle that. I know Selectman McChrisky, I think, is like the liaison for the Select Board on this project. Just how do you want me to communicate with the Select Board on this, to see who wants to have input, and then also the Planning Board and the Acting Town Planner, so I can easily coordinate with them, but also with the SRA and the CPC? Do you want me to just have people email me that want to be part of this initial meeting, or how would you like to handle it?
Hold, hold that thought. I'll come back to if we need a, a small group or if an email is sufficient, but Mr. McChrisky?
No, thank you. And again, I believe that there's going to be a lot of great things. There are federal grants available. How we get them is another thing. I've spoken to the Chief of Staff for Congressman Lynch, and a quick scan is Federal Rail Administration has some, Historic Preservation has grants available, but again, you know, you've got to look at the details in some of these things, and they require commitments as well. And again, they want to make sure if we get a grant that we're going to do what we say, and there's an actual need for it. So, there's, there's a lot more to that, but we are looking at that as well. There are many options, options for federal grants, particularly on the avenue that it is on the National Register of Historic Places. They want to keep up with places that they've given grants to, to make sure that it doesn't fall into decay and they become a waste of money like we're talking about. What have we done? What have we? What have we done? What have we spent? What do we get for it? You know, and they're doing the same thing. So in the grant, we have to show what we've done with previous grants and what the results have been. So, you know, when Mark brings up something, we've got to be able to say, listen, we found the need, we plugged that need with this grant, now we want to take it to the next area. Because, let's face it, I mean, with some of the things, we, we could spend $10 million in that place. You know, when you talk about refinishing the roof of that place on the inside, if we were gonna go that far, which I don't think we need to, but I'm just going for the worst-case scenario, that could be $3 million alone. You know, but if you, if you go around and look at it, everything that we have is it like the, that needs repair, great repair, within, within the 10 to 12-foot area. Everything about that, you know, above that is really not a priority yet. But, you know, I've looked at these as well. We can, there's an option through, you know, Federal Rail, Historic, the Mass Historical Commission as well, and, and then whatever the state can get, Senators, and we recall another project in town that, you know, $500,000 came out in a grant, just got put into the budget, just like that. That's money we can use, that's for darn sure.
Thank you, Mr. McChrisky. I saw Mr. Nunley's hand was raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, you know, one of my suggestions, because I, I agree with Joe in terms of grants, the availability of grants, but those grantees want to know exactly what it is that's going to happen.
Right.
One of my suggestions is that we, the group, whoever that may be, sit down with the premier historic preservationist on the eastern, on the east part of Massachusetts. Her name is Kathy, Kathy Carter-Reddith, has done dozens of these historic preservation buildings in the city of Boston, and would be more than willing to sit down and give a group an idea of where the monies are and how to go about getting them. Thank you.
Yes.
Great idea.
Mr. Coulter, could you repeat, because there's something with the acoustics, what he said, and then make your comment, please?
Well, he was talking about a person who's got great insight as to where the pots of money are within the grants, and I agree with that. There are people who specialize just in this. The approach, I was gonna say, is something that Reggie and, and Pam and I discussed last week with Mark, is we plan on hosting, hopefully in early March, a legislative breakfast in this room, for everybody in this room, for redevelopment, for planning, for the Board of Selectmen, for the Planning Department. In addition to grants, there are what we call airmarks, and Joe is right. We've got a delegation on the national level in, in Congressman Lynch, and on the local level with Senator Timmelti and two very, very, very successful reps. So we're gonna host that breakfast, but we have to be prepared at that breakfast to say what specifically we're looking for them to bring home. I was the state rep for Kingston for 12 years, they never once asked me to get a grant, or they never once asked, not a grant, an earmark. When they do earmarks, it's an outside section of the budget, where the budget may be a million dollars, but then there's $100 million in outside sections. Then every rep and every senator get X amount of dollars every year, and it goes to the squeaky wheel. So if we have a breakfast, a catered breakfast, which I'll host in this, in this room, and we say to them that these are the specific things we're looking for. At the fed, at the, at the state level, it's in the, it's in the three to $5 million if we have all three reps, all two, both reps and the senator ask for money together, and at the federal levels, level, it's in the tens of millions of dollars if we have a specific ask. So that's why, to Joe's point, the reason this collaboration is so important, we don't have to think about all the uses for all the buildings. If we thought about the use of, for one building, if it was gonna be $10 million to make the train station or, or the armory, the model building in the town, let's think big, get them in here, and it's so focused, it's on one thing that they're working on, getting in the state budget and the federal government for July 1st of next year. So February, March is the time to do that, but we just need to know where your focus is, what you want us to go deep sea fishing on, not, not for guppies, but for tunas.
So for the short, oh, Mr. Zamanian, I was just gonna ask, for the short term, my fellow board members, are we in agreement for the ask of $200,000 to CPC?
Unless they offer more.
Unless they offer more. It's just easy.
You gotta ask, Joe.
So I think I heard, can we do a roll call? Do we need to make a motion on that? Or just in agreement by show of hand?
Consensus?
Consensus. So I saw—
Mark, or would you rather a full vote?
If I may, Madam Chair, I think it would make sense to have a formal vote. That way, the CPC is aware of what's coming.
Okay. I'm a ve— open—
Make a motion?
Uh, make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Select Board formally request the support of the CPC Committee to support a expenditure of $200,000 to the train station to complete initial, what would you want to say, initial button-up costs or—
Initial opening costs.
Operational opening costs? Operational function?
Sure.
Okay, so something in that area you'll accept.
Yeah, the detail will be in the—
So we'll just say for this case, operational repairs funds. Second.
And I have a second, all in favor, and we'll do that by roll call. Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Gito? And that's a yes? He said he doesn't have a problem with it, so that's a yes, and I vote yes as well. So that's a unanimous decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, to, I believe, Joe, you'll be putting the application together with Paul. We'll need an urgent review and a full application for that. The urgent review would obviously not focus on the repairs need to be done, we know that. We've known that for many years. The urgency in this would be from a fiscal standpoint. If we don't do it now, we're waiting for another annual cycle. Typically speaking, unless it's an emergency, the CPC does not submit recommendations during a special anymore. We just didn't feel it was appropriate.
So that's that one page?
It's a simple one-page urgent review.
Right, and then the full review, the fewer, the full application with the, the quotes from the vendors and such, so—
Correct.
Okay, great. All right, we'll get right on that tomorrow morning?
And Barry Kessler can email you and Paul Jaffoon in the morning with the details, just so you don't forget anything.
Okay. And then the next, so thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you in the next steps on that. Next is Pam McCarthy had a hard deadline, which was February, I think I heard her say, and also Mr. Coulter had a hard time because of his reception, and that is best use, so you can write it, because you need to be straightforward in what your ask, what your purpose is for the building, and when you complete an application, you have to tell them, this is what we're gonna use it for. So we have to be able to answer that question. The question is, Pam McCarthy is going to apply for a grant.
Can I clarify?
For the study, I'm sorry, for the study.
Actually, can, can I clarify? We, we have the grant, the only thing that's left is to sign the contract. The work will begin in February. My question was, how will everybody here be involved in the initial meeting where we're putting together our initial thoughts for the survey that will go out to the broad public?
Okay, and Mr. Coulter?
For an earmark of $10, $10 million or more, we don't need an, we, you need the information, Pam, but we don't need an official quote like CPC does. We need to know when they come here, if we're gonna walk them across the street to say, this is what we envision over here. If they can see it and they can feel it, they'll put it in the earmark. Now, to get the money after July 1st, I'm sure they'll need volumes of information. But just to get them excited about the vision is all we need for the legislative breakfast. But they're not gonna be excited unless it affects either economic development, downtown development, or housing. They, they just won't be excited. Those are the priorities right now.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter.
I just wanted to let you know that as part of getting this grant, I did get a letter of support from Senator Timmelti and Representatives Phillips and Galvin. So they're on board, they have been for years with this project.
So I have, Mr. McChrisky said he wants to be involved, and then what is the best way that you suggest that everyone communicate with you? Would, by email or—
I, I think that the, the different committees that are here should divide, decide amongst themselves who they'd like to be the, the point person to communicate on this project, and then they could, they could email me.
The chairs of the relevant boards.
So the chairs of the relevant boards should be able to be the point person and communicate with you, which is our per usual process anyway, right?
Okay. And, and then I can just let it be known when, when the meetings will occur, and for the general public, for the public forum, I'll make sure the Town Crier and the Town News has the information up there for the meetings.
Excellent. So that is moving along really nicely. The next is the, discuss the armory best use.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky?
Mr. Zamanian?
Yes.
You're up.
I'm up.
I, I would, at this point, I would have no problem, me speaking, only me, of allowing that to go to the Redevelopment Authority right now.
Allow us what?
For the, a review to see what the best use of the armory. Scott, I know where I'm gonna, we're gonna be on this issue. All I'm saying is, this would be another, you know, say, let's—
I would like to have a chance to speak on it because—
Well, you will, I'm just saying—
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is—
No, go ahead.
Chairman, Chairman Roberts appointed me and Steve Cavie, because Steve had information, I had information, and that was how it was gonna go. Wasn't gonna be Joe taking over and let's give it away.
See, Scott, why do you have to go there?
I know, I'm, I'm just—
I'm not trying to take over. Scott, have a ball. I'm not gonna say another word. It's all yours.
Good. Thank you. Let me, let me—
Mr. Carrara?
I, I just have to say this, and then everybody can tear it apart and, and vote, vote, vote me quiet again. But I'm not gonna be quiet on this. The fire department's already made a huge mistake, huge mistake. So they've lost that. I offered it to the youth, the youth kid there, Matt Koschon—
Matt Koschon.
—Recreation. Big problem. Oh, how is everybody gonna get there? Okay. It was a simple thing to fix. He don't want it. We're talking about Chief Donna McNamara, there's problems over here. I had a discussion with an individual today. This is what we do. Best use. You put the police station down there, we find out what it's gonna cost, and then we take the old police station, you give it to the SRA, let them do their, their elderly thing, because it's in your downtown, it'll add to that number that we're supposed to have because we have the train here, and it's in walking distance for everything. To put a, a convalescent thing that far out so we can buy two more trucks to run them back and forth to bring them to the center so they can shop is ridiculous. And please, listen to me this time, because that thing on 400 Prospect Street's gonna come back to haunt yous, because some people just won't say we made a mistake. But you'll find out, it's not gonna serve this town for 50 years. You put Chief Donna McNamara down there, that'll serve the town for 200 years. That's all I'm asking, is a little bit of time to talk to you individuals and just do something commonsense right. We don't need to send it out to the public and put a, a thing out there to say, jeez, what do you think the armory should be? I fought hard to get it, it's been sitting there because people turned their backs on it. Now, it's gonna be all these great ideas. It was supposed to be a police or a fire station, not, not just—
Not an indeed.
Not just anything like that. But that's what it should be. She needs space, there it is. And if you go down 138, where the old Lincoln Mercury was, you'll see a giant mezzanine with a ton of cars for sale underneath. Once you get that up and done, maybe we can add something like that, so all her cars will be out of the weather. And she said before that she could respond, because they have area cars. All it is is a home base. It's a place that you can be proud of, it's on a main drag, and that's all I've got to say. I don't have to give it to somebody else to build anything. That's what we need in this town, that's gotta be done, because it's too small over there, and it's ridiculous. Give it to the SRA, let them do something for elderly.
I wanna respond to that, yeah, I wanna respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Carrara. I'll come back. I have Mr. McChrisky and Roberta had a comment, but I'm coming back to you, Mr. Carrara. Yes, Mr. McChrisky?
I wanted Scott to talk. He didn't know what I was gonna say, but now he's been heard. Redevelopment Authority is the best avenue for this. There was a meeting held. Scott couldn't make the meeting, I popped in, and there was a very constructive meeting on the, you know, the uses of that, including, and foremost, with the police chief in the meeting, space for the police department. There's additional space that can be utilized over there differently if things could be moved down to the armory. That was included in the conversation, Chief McNamara was there, you know, there were several people in that meeting, so it was discussed. It was discussed about the possibility of an area inside that could be used like a street hockey or a basketball, or somebody in the elderly to walk around and get exercise. There was multiple different things that were talked about in that meeting. And again, they were including offices or whatever, you know, so it's been done. But again, there's a building right there that is a prime example of how this town can work with our Redevelopment Authority and take away that lift of doing what we would have to do on our own. They have access to funds of their own to be looking at things. Let's find out how that building can best serve the community with the forefront of being that we know, we know, everybody knows, we have major issues that we have to address at the police station sooner or later. That building was another victim of how we used to do that, where the, the person who was the, the, in charge of the clerk of the works, was a resident that was known. It was a great guy who was a town meeting member, or a great guy that served on another committee, but they were not qualified to do the job. That's why we had substandard windows in the police station, that's why we had to deal with their ventilation system as well. I mean, so, you know, that's what the Redevelopment Authority brings to the table, is the ability to be the clerk of the works and to be our lead on the redevelopment of that building. You know, now, we have to sit here and decide what we're gonna do. Do we want to sit here on our high horses and say, we know what's better for the building? Or do we want to have a group that has resources available to them, can utilize, you know, state agencies, because they are a quasi-state agency in redevelopment, where the governor has an appointment to that committee? So, I mean, we could sit here and stick our thumbs on our belt buckle and say, we know what's better, but I would like to have somebody lead that process to tell us and how we can get funding and so forth. You know, so that's what I was gonna say. You know, let's, let's start the conversation there. I mean, because the building's been sitting, and I agree with Scott, it's been sitting there way too long, because we haven't got to that step where we said, the Redevelopment Authority's here. Scott, and you know, I was chair of the Redevelopment Authority, and we talked about it way back when, but we couldn't pull everything together. So now we have it, we have an active CPC, you know, there's so much I think we can do, but that's where I'm just saying, is it, you know, they would go and have the meetings with all the department heads, such it was done in this room right behind us, that was a very, very productive meeting. And I gotta say that I believe, and I think I would safely say that the chief, chief of police and the deputy wouldn't disagree with the comment when I said that they were excited about the opportunity that was presented during that meeting. So that's all I'm saying, and Scott did say that, I believe, I won't put words in his mouth, but I believe he said he was in favor of giving it to the, to the Redevelopment Authority for that purpose, and let's look into it, so.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. McChrisky. Can we allow Ms. Roberta, and then I said we was coming back, Roberta Harabak and then Mr. Carrara again, because I'm sure it's gonna be, take us in, and then, let me go in line, because I have Roberta Harabak, Mr. Carrara, and then Mark Zamanian. Okay.
Okay, hi, everybody.
Okay, hi, everybody. This is Roberta Harbach. I'm on the redevelopment authority. Back on Friday, May 6th, I had put together a meeting with Robin Grimm, Paul Jaffone, Joe McCrisky showed up, Chief McNamara and Deputy Chief Brian Holmes. We discussed the armory, using it as a more of a 50-50 use. 50 community service recreation and 50% police. Chief McNamara needs a spot for training. The area there would allot her to have training. It would also allot her to keep a vehicle there. I did speak to Matt Cauchon. He did not attend the meeting. He did like the idea of having the use of, I'm going to call it the basketball court, the center area. So, they didn't have to, even though the school is generous with their time, it would be easier for them if they had their own avenue to pursue things like that. And also, it could be used for community use, even let's just say voting or something for the 300th anniversary. So, we did get a lot accomplished in May. I was hoping that, it just seems like there was no money anywhere. But the cost would be about approximately $3 million. I have all the information back from in 2018, January of 2018, about the roof, all the construction, the taking away of the hazardous materials. This again would be more of a blank canvas. We wouldn't be tearing anything off the sides. Putting the new roof on, cleaning up the floor, putting in a, obviously bathrooms and a kitchen facility. And that's basically the gist of it. We're getting police work out of it, and we're also alleviating them there. And it also could be a great community space for whatever the town deemed to be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harbach. Go back to Mr. Carrara. So, we're down to police and service combo or police only.
I was police only. That's what I, that's what I said from the start. That's, there was a problem with, with the rec center. Because how are we going to get people there? There's no sidewalks. People want it, he said he wants, he's got his group in the center. We have to face the fact that if, you can't have police sharing a facility. It doesn't work that way, not in the intense atmosphere that has taken place in this town in the last couple of months. I'm sorry. These people are professionals. They want to have a shooting range and use the shooting range down there. I don't think kids can be around something like that. If it's being used, they're going to be inquisitive. If they want to do training, they need to do training on their own and not worry about what everything. To keep one car there, that's ridiculous. Give these people, give these officers, men and women, a place and a size that they can grow into and never grow out of. We are not taking Station 1, the fire station, and putting it in the swamp. You're giving these people something they can be proud of and something they can utilize. It'd be a beacon. You'll come around that curve, you're going to see the blue, the blue thing. It's just going to be, that's what they need. I'm sorry. I don't think it should be shared. And to give it to that building and do a thing with the SRA. The SRA has to put their money into something that's going to benefit or bring money in. They don't just give you their money. They're going to get something back. So, that's not good for the town. You know why? Because these people need their own private operation. It's a paramilitary operation. I just, it makes no sense. But I know, we do things in this town that make no sense. And it happens all the time. This building's too small. They say they don't know the proper things. They don't need to use the basketball court there because it's not going to be there anymore. It's going to be their police station. Let them lay it out. They operate here, and then when it's all done, they pick up and they move. What is so hard about that? It's the simplest thing in the world. I'm sorry. And my fingers are not in my belt. I've thought about a lot of things in this town for a long time. Then some people come along and they try to do it, but they don't understand where it came from for first time, so things get mulled up. It's been sitting there for a long time. Most fire chiefs, a couple of that I've talked to, Brookline, my cousin out of Newton, they said, "If you could drag that building to our town, we'd take it." In Brookline, they're working out of buildings that are 18-something. They've cut the round doors square so that the apparatus can go in. And it goes in like this. There's no room for a mistake. But they're still operating out of them. Take a walk across the street from the Mass Art. That building is thousands of years old, and it's still there. And people thumb their nose at that. Give that to Chief Donna McNamara. Let her build something she can be proud of for the future. And that's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. I did hear that also loud and clear that, but Mark Zemanian had a comment or statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that your purview as well?
I'm sorry?
Is that your purview to have a building that, that it's a, you have a return on investment?
That is correct. I wanted to kind of qualify that, and I do appreciate Joe's confidence in the redevelopment authority, having been on it. I know he knows what we can do. I'm going to be honest, if this building was turned over to the authority, I'm going to turn it into profit. I'm going to turn them into apartments, office space. I'm going to turn it into whatever I can turn a dollar on. What I know I can't do from the redevelopment standpoint is invest in recreation or municipal use. It's not how we function. We can invest in infrastructure if it means a business is going to be developing an area, and they can't do it without the infrastructure. But we couldn't take a building and just turn it into a municipal use building. From our standpoint at least, that's not generally what we offer. Recreation is something that the CPC can indeed invest and does invest quite vigorously and heavily in, in this town, whether it be open space or physical plants like the multi-sport court that Mr. Cauchon came to us recently for. Those are things we can invest in. Back in 2015, a set of plans were made up to turn the armory into a rec center. That ended up not going anywhere. So, if this was a rec-only building, sure, the CPC could entertain that, although I don't know that $3 million is something they'd entertain at this point. I'm not saying one way or the other, but that is certainly something that we could look at for a use and to recommend investing into. For a multiple-use building, like some municipality, i.e. police and the other recreation, then the CPC would have to look at funding a portion of that. But unfortunately, if you were to turn it over to the authority, we do have to turn it, it has to make sense business-wise, hence the name redevelopment. We're not a housing authority, and we're not strictly a municipal organization, so any funding that we could put together really should be for redevelopment, bringing business or life.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zemanian. Mr. Harbach, Roberta Harbach, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just want to clarify a few things. We were not putting a shooting range into the armory. That would be an additional $2 million on top of what would be there. The shooting range that is in the armory is not to the right size and length that is required now. So, that was not part of the issue. And it was more for training purposes when they have to train. It would be separate from, I'm going to call it, the gym area. Like I said, this was discussed with Chief McNamara and Deputy Chief Brian Holmes. And it was a 50-50, which I'm saying, it would be 50% community slash recreation and 50% municipal. So, obviously, wouldn't be going to the CPC for the whole amount of money. And that is just a guesstimate based on something that was made up, what, five or six years ago? So, costs have definitely skyrocketed since then. But, you know, that's my thought, and so at this point, I wouldn't want you turning over to the, to the redevelopment because obviously, my view is different than housing, and it's been this, like I said, since way back in May when I brought this forward. So, but thank you again. I won't bother again. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, no bother at all. This is a very stimulating discussion. I think it's very worthy. Just in full disclosure, I'm in discussions right now about bringing Norfolk County 911 to Stoughton. I've spoken to both chiefs about it. So, I'd ask that this discussion be deferred or be tabled for just 30 days. If we can convince them to bring us, to bring Regional 911 to Stoughton, they would occupy less than a third of the building, and our PD could occupy the other two-thirds of the building. And they would pay a significant amount of money for rehabbing and building out the building. So, I'm not sure if that would be the pleasure of this board or the redevelopment authority, but it's a discussion that's being had right now, so I just thought I should disclose that and perhaps put this off just for 30 days. They would, it would save the town over $1 million in dispatches because all of our dispatches would go to Norfolk 911 and be on their payroll as part of their lease payment. So, I'll report back more in the next 30 days or so.
Before we close this section of our agenda, any final comments before I defer with the select board regarding next steps?
I would like to ask-
Oh, Mr. Gito, I'm sorry.
I don't know if I'm on or not. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. Mr. Coulter? Would, would your use also allow the police station to be on that same property? I mean, there's, there's two pieces of property there. There's one right on the corner. And then there's, there's that other piece. And there's probably the opportunity to get a little bit more land there if we needed to. I'm, I'm kind of leaning toward what, what Mr. Carrara said about having a definite home for the, the police station. Your idea is intriguing, and if it would work together, it would be even more intriguing.
Sure.
So, if you give that some thought.
Madam Chair, there's actually two opportunities, since I'm in the space of full disclosure right now. One is a private contractor that will buy the building as is right now. I'm meeting with him next Tuesday at the building. And the second opportunity, and again, it's in the preliminary stage, is with Norfolk 911. Their center in Holbrook is fully saturated. They, it doesn't appear it can take in more towns. They want Stoughton in. Our fire department wants to be in. Our police department is opposed to it. What they both agree on it is if it was in Stoughton at the armory, they'd both love it. So, in the, in the process of trying to build consensus with the two chiefs, we approached Norfolk County. They're very interested, and they've got all the funding in the world to build that building out. And I've told them, they can't use anywhere near all that space. They could use a space half the size of this room. But it would be a tremendous benefit financially to the town. The police and fire would agree on it, and the rest of our, and our PD could be relocated there at a reasonable cost. I'll have more to report on it. I just, I didn't want to go on much longer without disclosing that to the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that added information. And before I defer to my board members for a motion, there were two hands. I saw Mr. Nunnally's hand, followed by Ms. Harbach's hand. And then I'll ask everyone at our joint meeting, the delegates, for their final comments. Then I'll defer back to my select board members for a motion of their choosing. Mr. Nunnally?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I support the idea of Mr. Coulter, the opportunity of getting 30 more days to just see what he can do. And it'll also give the SRA an opportunity to have a further discussion at its next board meeting as well. So, I think, you know, all these ideas are really good, but I really do support Mr. Coulter's idea of getting 30 additional days. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nunnally and Ms. Harbach.
Well, my hand had been more with Deborah. That was from the last time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any final comments for, from? Mr. Paul Demuse? I'm sorry, I overlooked your hand.
I just raised it, actually, Madam Chair. I was under the impression, because we got that armory, I heard, for a dollar, that it could only be used for municipal purposes, that we couldn't just sell it outright.
That is my understanding as well.
Yes. Yeah, it's in the, it's in the deed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Chair Kaby?
Yeah, sorry, I just, I believe that the state has a right of first refusal, not that it reverts back to the state, but, okay. Well, I guess this should be documented somewhere, so we'll read it, and then we'll know.
I understood, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I understood that the, that the, the pass back to the state may or may not have to occur. I could be wrong on that, but I think that before we, before we lock into that is the only option, that we should be absolutely clear on that. And, and I'm not disputing what anyone else is saying. I don't know whether 20 or 30 years may have changed the landscape. And I don't want to preclude the opportunity to perhaps do two good things rather than only one, so.
Yes. Before I accept a motion, because I too want to allow the 30 days, but I want to see with my fellow board members what their wish is. But I ask our delegates if they have any final comments before they close their meeting.
Madam Chair, I have no further comments, although this has been a very productive meeting tonight. Lot of great ideas, and I'm looking forward to seeing some action on those ideas. I would ask that you give both the CPC and the SRA a moment to adjourn when you're ready for that.
Yes, I believe we're ready for that right now.
Great. I'm going to ask that the CPC make a motion to adjourn at this point, if there's no further discussion.
I shall move.
All right, I get a lot of seconds, and so, by roll call, Dwight McCarron?
Yes.
John Linehan? Michael?
Yes.
John Morton?
Yes.
Richard Terry? And the chair votes yes. Now, if it could be so-
Dwight is here.
If I could get a motion for the SRA to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
By roll call, Reggie?
Yes.
Roberta?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. You're all free to go if you want to now.
May I get a motion for the planning board to close their meeting?
So made.
Can I get a second? Roll call? Paul Demuse?
Yes.
Richard Terry? Paul? And Dan Kelly, yes. Our meeting is now closed.
Thank you very much. It was nice seeing everyone. Thank you. It was a productive meeting. And now to my fellow board members, I'm open, oh, two, two minutes until they get settled.
Madam Chair, one other thing. I'm going to wait behind in the event that you have any questions on the CPC articles that are on your agenda tonight.
Thank you very much, Chairman Zemanian. Thank you very much, Chairman Zemanian. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess while everyone regroups. Yeah, hey, hey.
Were you hiding up back there?
No, he was out. I saw him all the time. I called the.
When I make my motion, you may laugh, so don't put that in your mouth till after the motion fails or passes or whatever.
Hello, everyone. I called the select board meeting back to order at 10:37 PM. Are there any motions to finalize? No, we're going to, we have to finalize the budget tonight so we can get it to FinCom. Okay. Any motions or just to close the final, our last discussion on Armory and Train Depot? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed your hand, Mr. McCrisky.
A pen. I'll put the hand up there.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Carrara as the board's liaison to this project with the Armory to follow the process through, to make sure that, you know, everything that we talked about of using, what was talked about, the meaning of more of a police presence and work with Mr. Coulter on the communication line, you know, on that possibility. So I'll make the motion that Scott, you know, be the board's liaison to that project, the Armory project.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Carrara, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I do, and I thank Mr. McCrisky for that.
Oh, wonderful. So all in favor, and I'll do that by roll call. Mr. Carrara, he said he thanked Mr. McCrisky for making that motion.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
And Mr. Gito. And I vote yes as well. That's unanimous decision. Mr. Carrara is the liaison to the development and best use for the Armory. So thank you very much. Now is budget. I'll hand the mic over to Mr. Coulter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we begin to take any of the final recommendations from the board, we were, through the board, given notice that our Norfolk County retirement obligation is $45,000 higher than we had budgeted. I worked with Mr. Gito and with Bill today. We know where we're going to take it from the budget, but that will be the first adjustment that we'll be making tonight, tomorrow morning, before we send it over to the FinCom. Other than that, in your budget, there are notes that, as you had requested, on where we added costs to any line items as to what the money was for. We also have a cover sheet Mark and I are preparing with Bill to the FinCom showing 12 items that we would have liked to have added to the budget but just don't have the money to do so. And we're asking that if the Chapter 70 money comes in higher than expected, that those 12 items be considered right off the top. And that none of them are frivolous, all of them are very necessary to run town government. But we were not going to increase receipts to balance the budget above and beyond what's reasonable going into an uncertain year. So we've got very reasonable expectations on revenue and as of right now, we've got a balanced budget, a slight surplus after tomorrow when we change, when we add the adjustment for the county government obligations. We'll have a couple of thousand dollars left over and that's about it. So I can report to you that we've made substantial changes from the original draft budget. Almost every department is feeling a bit of pain. There are a tremendous amount of opportunities and risks that we're not going to be able to take advantage of in this coming year because we just don't have a surplus to work with. But it is a responsible budget. It meets all of our obligations. It meets all of our basic needs for services. And so with that, as far as Mark and Bill and I and the Budget Committee are concerned, you've got before you a well-thought-out budget where we have considered and included all of your recommendations from this board, whether it was additions or, in some cases, recommendations of reductions. So between Mark and Bill and myself, we'd be happy to answer any questions or last-minute adjustments you'd like to make. I will add one more time, and I'll say this to FinCom when I meet with them. What made this budget work is an extraordinary amount of consolidation and consolidation of staff. I'll be writing a memorandum to the five of you no later than Friday with a series of management changes throughout the organization that Mark and I and Bill are considering, where we're adding responsibilities to people who have demonstrated that they thrive on additional responsibilities. And that, those movements are allowing us to not add any clerical staff to this budget, none, that I'm aware of. No, there are no new positions in clerical. It's department heads taking on additional responsibilities. Some of them, we haven't spoken to the reporting staff, so we're not free to announce them tonight in public, but I'll be sending an email to all of you tomorrow with those changes to the budget. We are going to point out to the Finance Committee, as we have to you, that when we do that, it may look like we're giving extraordinary raises to department heads. We're doing so only after we come back to this board, once we've evaluated them, we've put in place a job description and can justify how we are avoiding adding to headcount. I think what we failed to understand sometime is if we hire somebody for $50,000, that person, if they're on health insurance, is costing us $70,000. After that, that person is costing us another $25,000 to $30,000 in, probably even higher, in benefits, taxes, and so forth. So it ends up being, for $50,000 employee, $100,000 investment. So we're very slow to add support staff and we're finding ways to get more done with fewer people. I think that's going to be the way of this world for the next two to three years. And as I promised, by the end of the third year, we hope to avoid the use of free cash to balance budgets and we hope to have no subsidies going to enterprise funds and we plan to have no deficits in any of our trust funds. But it's going to take real pain over the next three years and I just want to congratulate the people that worked on the Budget Committee before my arrival and were such professionals. When I came in with a machete and started slashing and talking about ways that we can do more with less, they were very receptive, very cooperative, very supportive. And so with that, Madam Chair, through you to the rest of the members, Mark and Bill and I proudly support this fiscal budget for fiscal '24.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coulter. Before I acknowledge Mr. Rowe, I want to ask my fellow board members, do you have any questions to Mr. Zemanian on his CPC articles?
Those aren't part of the budget. Those are part of the.
But he's waiting, yeah, I understand that, Mr. Gito. And I just wanted, if you have any questions, I just wanted to acknowledge because it is getting kind of late. And I know it's late for us, too, but did you have any questions for him?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have one question. And this is something, you know, that I've talked about. I just wanted to make sure it's clear to the rest of the board as well. So I've received from the CPC a list of all of the votes, numerous votes over this last year. Let me just start by saying, you did a tremendous amount of work this last year and very much the benefit of the town. So thank you very much for all that hard work to both you as chair, but to the entire committee. A really amazing amount of work has been done. And I was very glad to see that nearly all of the votes were unanimous, with one exception. There was one vote, this is for the lights regarding the, sorry, the lights for the.
Lights and scoreboard.
Thanks, thanks for the.
Scoreboards.
This would be for the Little League, our Little League teams. And that was still passed overwhelmingly, but there was one vote against. And I just wanted to discuss publicly the reasons for that.
Sure. Full disclosure, I was the one opposing vote to that. When I made a negative vote, I very much think this is a worthy article. My concern was, as chair of the Community Preservation Committee, I have the responsibility of spending our taxpayer money in as prudent a way as possible. I have, if you will, a fiduciary responsibility. My concern, and this was brought up at great length during our meeting, was I was not comfortable approving any amount of money for something that might never be turned on. What I say when I say that is you have a license agreement that states a certain piece of it, but there was a motion made by this board that annually, the committee, sorry, the nonprofit that runs Stoughton Youth Baseball come back and ask for permission to turn the lights on. Now, in fairness, it was a wise motion from a certain perspective, meaning I think the intent of it, from hearing the conversation, was that you, that person was, the select board was looking to protect the residents. This is something that were a couple of residents opposed to. And this was a motion made to protect those residents. So if it wasn't used the way it's written in the license, which is fairly specific actually, can only be used during playoffs, which limits the timing of it somewhere in June, off the top of my head, I think it flows into July a little bit, don't hold me to that, but, and that the lights be shut off at 10 o'clock, I believe, period. So a little added protection for the residents was certainly a prudent thing. My concern was, what if hypothetically two members of this board change in April and those two people hate baseball? And one member here has concerns about the lights going on. I've spent $130,000 on something that will never get turned on. I do not consider that fiscally responsible on the part of the CPA, which was the whole point of my vote, my negative vote on that.
I appreciate that. I know that you voted against it, but I know you weren't the only person concerned about this.
There was a number of us that were concerned.
Yeah. And, you know, for that reason, we don't have to belabor this tonight, and I appreciate you, I just wanted to kind of get this, air this out a little bit because I think it's an important issue. I would like to, in a future meeting, propose that we reconsider that component of the vote. I think that when this goes to the floor of town meeting, I think this shouldn't be something that muddies the water for the applicants. It shouldn't make it more difficult for our Little League teams to get lights for playoffs, this concern. And I think that, even though I have confidence that town meeting will ultimately approve this, I think that it's, the value of it doesn't really outweigh some of the issues that were, I think, unforeseen, but I think very real with regard to how this money's spent. And so thank you very much for your time. That was just the one thing I wanted to address.
No problem. In principle, it's a good project. It meets the requirements of the CPA. It benefits the community at large and it clearly falls under recreation. Again, my concern was specifically, how can I approve funds that I don't know will ever go to any use? If you choose to reconsider it and want to attach some sort of, any complaints will shut down the lights and bring that organization to the select board, that would change my vote, or something along those lines. I'm not telling you what to do, I'm just telling you why I had to, I had a fiscal responsibility to vote no, and it killed me. But, you know, especially with all those little guys.
Yeah.
Saying, I want to play like the Red Sox, too.
So I would just ask, as the chair, can we get that on a future agenda, a motion to reconsider?
Yes, we can. We can absolutely get that on a future agenda. And I don't see any other questions for you, for CPC, so thank you very much and you have a nice evening.
Thank you for appreciating my time. It's been a long night. You have a good night.
Thank you.
I'll have a good night.
Thank you. And I'll turn the conversation back to agenda item on the operational budget. And are there questions for Mr. Coulter or Bill Rowe regarding the budget? And I look at Mr. Gito, I'm just going to do a round robin.
I have no questions. I would like to compliment the crew that put this together, the town manager, interim town manager, Mr. Rowe. This is the clearest budget that I have seen probably ever. And I, with the, when it comes to voting or making a motion, I would move, well, first of all, the, I would suggest that we accept the amendment that will be made to this by Mr. Coulter. But I would, I would move that we accept it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gito. And do you know, I had a conversation with Mr. Coulter and Mr. Tisdale today and I said basically the same thing to them on that telephone call and they said to me, say it again, say it again. I thought it was very understandable and I agree with it. Well, I said a couple of other things, too, but all in two minutes, see there? Yes, Mr. Rowe, I didn't forget about you.
Madam Chair, I know it's late, but I have to share this because the chair has not only a very sharp sense of humor. She spoke, the chair called Mark and I today, we're in my office, and she said, do you have two minutes? I said, absolutely. A half an hour later, I said, Madam Chair, you said two minutes. And she said to me, she goes, that was for me to talk.
True. Thank you. That was funny. Mr. Rowe, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Rowe, Town Accountant. I'd just like to shout out to our Assistant Town Accountant, Mary Jane Martin, for the formatting of the spreadsheets. She's an Excel wizard with the formatting. So she, we also added, she also added today, at the manager's request, numbered footnotes, so a number of which corresponds to, it's not in your, it'll be in the distribution tomorrow in the final. And she also added a, to the community events line, we added a line for 300 anniversary committee payroll and 300 anniversary committee expenses with $0. And there's a footnote that says, to be paid from the celebration fund. So that'll be in tomorrow's distribution. So the, with the change to the Norfolk County retirement number, the total number for the general fund is 122,129,074. No change, no change to the enterprise funds. So those are as-is in the distribution that you have. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Are there any other questions or there is a motion on, there's a motion, I just need to be second? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Okay.
But I do have a comment as well.
Do you want to do your comment first? The motion was, Mr. Gito, would you restate your?
To accept the budget as presented with the amendment that the town manager mentioned. mentioned and Mr. Rowe mentioned.
Can I get a second?
I seconded that.
Oh, okay.
And discussion? Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McCrisky.
Just a short comment, you know, and again, to, you know, to ring the bell of the Town Manager. Has it been a full, has it been a full two months yet?
It seems like it.
Well, it seems like a year, but, you know.
It's six months.
No, I mean, this was something I had the honor of serving with the Vice Chair on vetting the candidates, and I think I can really restate what I said. I believe Steve will remember it. And I said, I found my guy, that Town Manager was the only person during the process, which my colleagues saw, you know, in the second round, that had a vision for this town, had done his research on the town, knew what he was going to be looking, and not only did he come in and grab it and take ownership of it, he, he became and brought in the, the great work of Mark Tisdale as the interim Town Manager to sit by his side, as he's doing here. And it's kind of changed how we've done things, you know, and in the short time you've been here, Tom, you know, I'm telling you, it's great. You know, the things you've found, how you've engaged with people, how you've got a lot of these board members complimenting you, which sometimes is very scarce, but it's a good thing. We're all working well together. I think we're doing the right job for the town. This budget does reflect that, that you've got everybody together on this thing, and it's been put in a format that this board has been, you know, able to understand it and support it. So my hat's off to you and your team, you know, and Mark, again, for everything you've done and continue to do, so I know you're not going anywhere. You know, we've already got, we've already got safeties in for that. You know, there's already a team that's been assigned, you know, if you ever do something wrong, you're being pulled back in. Tom's the one that put it in place, by the way. That's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tisdale.
Well, since we're praising Tom, it usually happens now, and then we don't do it again for a while, but...
At least another month.
Exactly. No, he's been a great, and all of the times I've thought about, should I do this permanently now? I've always questioned, like, if we have a great leader that comes in place, it makes the decision so much easier. But I've always wondered if we were going to get that, and we definitely got that. And Tom, he's a great mentor. I learn from this guy every day, literally, every single day.
It's kind of...
I listen to every word he says, and even, even some of the recommendations for readings, you know, books that he's read that he uses as part of his, his management style, I've bought and I've started reading. And it's, it's very motivating. It's a very motivating atmosphere, and I think a lot of the department heads probably share that same, that same vision and experience that I do. So it's motivating coming to work every day. It's going to be a pleasure for the next six to eight years.
Twenty-two years? Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Anyone, okay, Mr. Carrara, oh, Vice Chair Cavey? Okay, Mr. Carrara.
I'll echo some of the sentiments that have been going on here, and I was, I was proud to be able to appoint Mark as the interim. I knew he could do it. But I was just as proud that Tom has brought some solidarity back to this town hall, and when I come in, I see people are happier, they're pulling together, there's no more go in my office and shut the door and hope somebody doesn't bother me. But I know for a fact that he visits offices, unlike somebody else who used to sneak up the back stairs and just go in and then leave. But that's what you need, is somebody who's, "How's your day? Thanks for coming in." That means a lot to people. It really does, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you so much, and now Vice Chair...
Yeah, so, you know, I, Tom, you've done a great job building a team, a team that works...
Yeah, we know that theme.
That works together.
I don't use that word.
I will say that was the most challenging question I've ever had.
Nah, but...
But he sold me on it, though.
Yeah, yeah.
The humor is wonderful.
Yeah, no, the whole team, everyone's done an amazing job. I've come in a couple of times to sign papers. You guys are, I know you're, you're in the books, you're constantly working through it, and I'm just kind of poking it every now and then. So if it's, either I'm the, you know, the sort of the luckiest guy who just happens to show up whenever you happen to be working on budgets, or you worked on them absolutely constantly, which I, I think is the later, the latter. And it really is reflect, you know, reflects in what we're presented. I did have a couple of questions. They should be pretty straightforward.
Sure.
So the, the first is, we had discussed the idea of having a list of items that we would like to add, if, if that's available. I didn't happen to see in this package, but I was wondering if that was something that we're going to...
It's not in the package because I shared it with Lou today, and he took it with him. No, I put it in your package. So I do have that packet here, and I can either email it to you tonight or have a few first things tomorrow morning.
No, I don't actually need it. I just, I just wanted to make sure we have, like, a running list of things that we know we would, we want to add, and when we transmit this to the Finance Committee, I want them to not be shocked, but they want them to have it with them, and they, they know this, this might be something that would be available.
It'll be in a, in a cover letter we send to them about the process and how to get to a point where we have a consensus budget where both FinCom and the board agree.
Perfect.
Go to town meeting with one, with one budget.
Awesome, yeah, so that was the, really the main thing. I know in the past, we had, it was a very small one, but we had a surplus. Now it's balanced, and I know you had a list of things that changed. I'm seeing, you know, I don't remember what it was before, but it seems like those numbers are probably more or less coming from the changes, right? There's, there's...
It's about $40,000.
Yeah, yeah, so there's position, I think it's two positions or two, two expenses, essentially.
Just show Steve, if you wouldn't mind.
Uh, thank you.
And I'll email it to all of you tomorrow. Lou, I, I handed that to you, you didn't take it.
Well, I, I knew that, but it didn't...
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not...
Okay. Thank you. So the, 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 the changes are based on expenses that are being added to the golf course, right? There's $35,000 and $10,000.
There are, there are a bunch of changes, as we footnoted here, and as we summarized in a document, that, that is in this budget, Mark, isn't it? It's in the package. The ones we added and subtracted are in the package. The ones that we are not included, that we'll deal with out of free cash, is the one we just handed you.
Perfect, okay, okay. That's, that's it. This has been as frictionless a process as I've ever seen, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Steve.
Madam Chair, if I may just respond to all those kind words in not, in, in...
Yes.
In any hyperbolic way, but with all sincerity. One of the biggest concerns I had in coming to Stoughton is, is I didn't know the staff. And I spoke with people who had worked here, and they all assured me that the staff here, starting with, with, with Mark and Bill, was among the best. And then, as, as I met with each of you individually, you all commented on it. I came into this town with my eyes wide open in terms of the challenges and the opportunities we have. What I didn't know firsthand is what the staff would be. Mark and I have become true partners, so much so that as we interview people, particularly in Bill's department, Mark is going to be involved in making the final decision of who the next town accountant will be, or Assistant Town Accountant will be. And, and, and only because Mark's going to be working with them four years, five years, from now, or whenever that may be. So we're building a succession plan so that Stoughton is never left shorthanded. Beyond Mark and Bill, we had an assessing problem eight days ago, and our assessor, and we all wish her well, has been out sick for a couple of weeks. And we have a manager in Trish IT who's worked in that department around the clock, never any, never additional compensation or any complaints, and has completely taken that issue on head-on and addressed it and resolved it, and, and we've got the consultant coming tomorrow to get the new billings out the door. I can give you examples from this office to the second floor, to the first floor, not as much on the second floor, but...
That's for Mark.
Of people just do extraordinary things. So Steve, you told me at breakfast, the strength of the town is its staff. I can't tell you how true that's been. I'm having a blast, and if you weren't happy with me, that'd be too bad because you can't, I wouldn't leave if you asked me to. I'm having a blast. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for those kind words, and, and we'll, we'll have to you next week the completed warrant, and we'll go through that the same way, with the same footnotes. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I do have a question. You said something that was a catalyst to something that, huh, it was, hmm, and that is, when you hire new people, when they're in a probation period and they take time, do they accrue sick days and vacation days?
You get your vacation days, Dave, you accrue your time off. We've got people who have missed a lot of work in their first 30, 60 days. It becomes an issue for them. Not me, I'm always there.
No, we're talking about the, and the other is for your department heads. Are you encouraging a common anniversary date, like July 1?
I haven't really thought of that. I don't even know, Mark, Bill, how's it going, our anniversary date? It's more crystal, yeah, July, July 1. Most of July.
For all new hires, we've been doing July, July 1.
Okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I had, because that was a question.
Each member, if you have enough time to come visit the office, Mark and I have put together objectives for 90 days, the first 90 days, and then objectives for 2023. They're pretty bold, it's about 30 of them. Some of them have to get done, that's emergency, others we want to get done, but if you can stop by the office and take a look and excuse my spelling or whiteboard, I think you'll find it very likely. That's the level of partnership we've got.
Okay, thank you very much. So we have a motion on the table that has been seconded, and on the motion, Mr. Carrara.
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey.
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky.
Yes.
Mr. Gito.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. The last thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'm sorry, okay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion to adjourn?
So may... Second?
Or third?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Good night, everyone, and thank you so much. Bye-bye.
You sound like you're ending a game host. Good night.